Second board meeting, that'll be held in Tahoe. And at this point, we don't have any items on that agenda. On November 5th, the board will hear the Black Hawk Lane rezoning project. That was before your commission back in August, August 22nd. That was part of a minor land division as well. On November 12th, tentatively, the board will hear an appeal of the planning commission's approval of the micro-technics minor use permit. That as well was approved by your commission on the 22nd. So as far as upcoming planning commission meetings, October 30th, I think everybody knows we're having a special planning commission hearing up in Tahoe. And at the hearing, we'll hear two subdivision modifications, one in Alpine Meadows, one in the Carnelian Bay area, as well as Crystal Jacobson will be providing an update workshop on the Tahoe Basin Community Plan process, as well as requesting direction from your commission. And then on November 14th, the only meeting in November, so we'll have tentatively the Belcara subdivision project on the agenda. Right now, that's tentative, that's a 39 lot subdivision in the Forest Hill area. And then the last meeting of the year is scheduled for December 12th. And at this point, we have no agenda items on that meeting. Any questions? Great.
You're driving up and some of us that live down here that want to go with you?
Sure.
What about, what time should we meet?
That'll be, we'll be taking off probably right around 8 o'clock, so if you could be here like 10 to 10 to 8, quarter to 8, that'd be great.
Let me see, I'll be absent on the November 14th meeting.
Okay. Yeah, at this point, that project, not sure if it's going to be ready. We did complete the environmental review, public review period on that project. We received a few letters that we need to look at and, you know, in preparation of the staff report.
I would have liked to have attended that particular meeting.
Okay.
Because of my location, because of my connection with Forest Hill.
Sure.
If it goes forward on the 14th, I won't be there.
Okay, we'll keep that in the back of our minds for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
And you'll have to bear with us this morning. Apparently, the slides are not, the IT person told me the slides are not working the way they should be, so they might be a little slower. The request before you is for the installation of vehicular gates at three entrances to the Morgan Greens, or three entrances to the Morgan Creek, excuse me, subdivision, and one entrance to the Morgan Greens. And the area in question is right here on Vineyard. It's west of Roseville. Here's Vineyard, Walurga, PFE, and Cook Riolo Roads. And this is the Morgan Greens subdivision and the Morgan Creek subdivisions. The applicants would like to install vehicular gated entrances here at the Vineyard, Morgan Creek entrance, the Waterstone Drive, the Pinehurst Drive entrance, and the Jimmy Way entrance into the Morgan Greens subdivision. All four entrances currently have guard houses and the three Morgan Creek entrances have 24-hour-a-day manned greeters. Operation of all four, the gates would be controlled through this Vineyard Road entrance. The Walurga gate would be, there would always be a person here, a greeter, and this person would electronically control the gates at Jimmy Way and PFE, and part of the time at the Waterstone Drive entrance, there would be a person, a greeter during regular golfing hours and anytime they have a, an event there. Otherwise, that gate would also be controlled by the Vineyard entrance. Proposed gates would be located further back in, currently, here's the guardhouse. This is the Vineyard Road entrance, and the gates would be further back into the subdivision than the current guardhouses entrances. And the, there'd be very minimal construction that would be required for the three Morgan Creek areas because the areas are already set up for that. You have the entrance for the visitors that come through here and they would stop here, and then the people that live would just come through and go through the gates. And all of the pedestrian and bicycle entrances for the public will remain open as they are today. Here's the Waterstone entrance, and as you see, here's the guard shack, and here is the proposed gate. Next slide, please. So this is where. So the next slide you'll see is the PFE road. And again, here's the guard shack, here's the proposed gate entrance. And at the Jimmy Way entrance to the Morgan Greens, they needed to have a little bit more area to accommodate the turnaround, so a resolution went before the board two days ago and was approved. This area in here is multipurpose easement and multipurpose trail easement that the county own, and they're gonna, they approved for the planning director to sign, as long as this is approved today, that they would, the planning director would be able to sign off on a minor boundary line adjustment for that, for the purchase of this 2,000 square foot area.
I have a question. There's a map in the package that showed that there's a trail easement there?
Right.
And the whole trail was going to be abandoned?
Mm-hmm.
That's what it appears at any rate?
Mm-hmm. Because they, they pushed that trail up forward north towards the Dry Creek area. They moved that whole area.
Oh, so there'll still be a trail?
Right.
It's just where they had it originally planned?
Right, it never came to fruition. And so during the mitigated negative declaration process, we looked at various aspects, and one of them was aesthetics. And as you can see here, here's the, how it looks today. Here's the pedestrian entrance that's open, and it's kind of hard to see on this photograph, but the gate is right back here. Everything else remains the same. With regards to the community plan consistency, the community plan does state that they want to keep things open for human interaction. All four entrances, as you could see on the previous slide, will remain open for pedestrian and bicycle access. Staff determined that the proposal was consistent with the characteristics of the subdivision and the other subdivisions that are up and coming in the area, two of which in recent history have, this commission has approved gates for those, the Cabral Ranch most recently, and then the American Vineyard Village also is approved for gates. And those are, the Cabral Ranch, I believe it's right in this area, and the American Vineyard Village is down a couple miles to the east off of Vineyard. And this project, oop, sorry, went too far. This project did go before the plant, the West Placer Mac, where, back in February, where it was, went for an informational item and then went back for an action item in February, and it was unanimously recommended for approval to the planning commission. And so with that, staff forwards their recommendation and requests that the planning commission adopt the mitigated neg deck and approve the modifications to both subdivisions. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Question. Lisa, is there turnarounds on all four gates? I didn't see on that first slide that.
Yes.
All four have.
Yeah, all have, all four have sufficient turnaround, and that was looked at very carefully by our engineering, surveying, and DPW area. And that's why the Jimmy Way entrance, they needed to purchase that little bit of extra area to make that turnaround, but the turnaround already exists at the other three.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Lisa. If the applicant would care to step forward?
Members of the planning commission, my name is John Hodgson, the Hodgson Company. I'm based out of Sacramento. I think Lisa did an excellent summary of the project. It's taken two years of processing through the county. I want to thank Planning and Public Works and others for their assistance. I'm going to say very little, I just want you to know that this is something that the HOA board members, or the members of the HOA at both Morgan Creek and Morgan Greens have been working on for a long time. There's nearly 700 homes there. Morgan Greens is about 117 and Morgan Creek about 579. They have two reasons for this, simply, one is security, better security. There have been increasing issues of theft and break-ins, and they believe this will allow them much greater detail, particularly as it relates to being able to put in the electronic, surveillance is probably the wrong word, to be able to identify license plates as they come in and go out. And secondly, there's a fairly significant financial reason, and that is, is that by providing security gates and the electronic gates, the way that they're being proposed, they would be able to eliminate one and a half of the three full-time, 24-hour manned gates. As you can imagine, having somebody there 24 hours a day on all three gates is very expensive. I think they'll be saving about $100,000 a year, which candidly is, you know, is a fair amount of money in today's market. With that, I'm happy to answer questions, but I think Lisa's done an excellent job of laying out what we're requesting.
Okay.
I just have one quick question. Yeah, I guess, reading the staff report, I was a little bit confused. Apparently, are these gates going to be, have the ability to be activated by the residents?
Yes.
Okay, so they have that activation?
In the earlier slides, there's one that goes where the, where the gate is, well, there's two, there's two entrances, or two accesses, and one is electronically, just a little, little card on your, on your, on your, on your car, similar to Fast Track in the Bay area. So yes, residents would be able to go in and out freely.
Okay, and so then, visitors, apparently in the past, and I think I've driven in one of the gates, and they do, there is a person standing there, but.
That's correct.
They don't really have a lot of ability to screen who you are, you know, just, I guess.
Well, you.
And so I'm wondering, will this, how will this change that?
Well, this will provide, first of all, provide the ability for people not to go to the outside and just drive through. They'll have to go through, if for some reason the manned person is not there, which happens from time to time, this will allow them to be able to monitor who it is, and at a minimum, be able to identify, identify the, the car with the license plate.
So a visitor pulls up and you say.
The visitor pulls up today and talks to a human being. The visitor pulls up in the, in the future, depending on which gate, there will be a human being at the main gate Vineyard 24 hours a day, just as today, except you'll have the, the gates there. On the other two, when there is no one there, they will come up, they will hit a little button, the person at the main gate Vineyard will talk to them, find out where they're going, and, and then let them in, and be able to identify that car in the event that there's a problem in the future.
Okay, so they'll be taking pictures of the cars?
Yeah, yeah, and that stays for two weeks or something like that. It's just one of these, you know, surveillance cameras.
So a visitor would have to identify an address or a purpose before they would get in?
Yes, yes, apparently, yes. Same as they have to do right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the main advantage is just the reduction of the amount of personnel that you have to.
Well, and the, the fact that you have gates there now that stop them, there are no gates there right now. If I'm the guard and I'm talking to somebody and the person goes through what they still call the residence entrance, which is 10 yards over there, they can just drive in. That happens on occasion, and there's really no way to sort of monitor them. It's just, it's, you know, it's, it's a marginal increase in, in security.
Marginal? Have you been, experienced a lot of theft in that area?
I'm told they are, yes. I mean, we have representatives of both HOAs here, and I would say the answer is yes. That's, that was, that was, I'm, that was the main motivation. Saving money is certainly helpful, and they looked at that, but the main motivation is security out there.
Okay.
There are break-ins, you know, cars and houses. It's not a crime wave per se, but it's the kind of thing that they want to be able to address it now.
Okay, yeah, it seems like we kind of, a couple other approvals, we kind of opened Pandora's Box for the future of this area. Apparently, before, it was thought that gates were not desirable.
Yes, that's, that's my understanding, although I think in this case, you effectively have people being stopped anyway, but this provides a slightly higher degree of security.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions?
Thank you.
I just have a question, that I think you answered Richard's there and answered most of mine. Basically, it's a gated community now, except some people may sneak in, like you were just mentioning, if the guard is busy. I mean, it's a gated community now. I just can't go out there and drive in without talking to somebody. Is that correct?
That's generally correct, yes.
Okay.
It's a gated community without gates.
Well, I understand, I'm just using the gated as an example. That's about it, I guess.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, I'm going to open the session up to public comment. How many people are going to address this upon this? Okay, I'm going to close the public. And return it to the board for discussion. Gentlemen? Jeffrey?
I don't see a problem with the gates going up. The, the access to the community is restricted anyway. This just gives it a little backbone to restrict the access from somebody who's willing to drive around the guard, knowing full well they're not going to get chased into the subdivision. But I, I don't see it, for the majority of the people coming and going, it's really not going to change things, except for perceived security.
Just a comment, through the years, as we have debated this issue thousands of times, I think, the one, the one issue that I always sort of hung my hat on was, I would rather have it happen this way, not put the gate in initially, but let the homeowners come back, and if majority of the homeowners think that it's necessary for their community to have a gate, then reevaluate it at that time, and if necessary, then, then approve it. And I think that's pretty much what's happened here, and so I, I think this is, from my perspective, approvable, because the homeowners themselves are doing it, it's not being done as a sales gimmick, per se.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure that I'm, I'm clear, that the pedestrian and bicycle, well, pedestrian access will always remain open 24/7?
Correct, and there's.
There's no gates there with little push buttons or anything like that? Okay.
And there's actually a condition of approval that requires that.
That, that's what I, okay.
Well, hearing no further questions and discussion, shall we take it to a vote?
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. Chairman?
Okay, I'll, I'll find the right page here. Oh, you got it already. I'll follow the staff's recommendation and adopt a mitigated negative declaration and the mitigated, mitigation and monitoring reporting program has set forth in attachment D, an approved conditional use permit modification, PC PM 201, 20208, to the Morgan Riolo Greens conditional use permit, CUP 1843A, and to the Morgan Creek conditional use permit, CUP 1844A, to allow for gated entries at all four entrances to the subdivisions, subject to the following findings and attached recommended conditions of approval in attachment B. And on that same page are the listed conditions under the findings for SEQA, and I think that's it.
I'll second that.
We have motion and a second. I'll call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye. And opposed? Motion carries. Now, if anyone should wish to appeal this decision, I believe we have a fee of $536 and can be filed with a clerk during the office. Thank you.
Make the check out to the chairman.
Oh, yeah, wait a minute, I'm in my car. Oh, you're almost on time. All right, moving right along. Mr. Alvaldi will address this on our next agenda item.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. This item before you is a request to modify the vesting tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit for the enclave at Granite Bay project. I think this is the third time in the last three years that this project's been before you. It was originally approved in 2011, and then modified at the end of 2012. This time around, there's a new owner. It's a Granite Bay development, and they acquired the property in June. For the most part, they want to keep the subdivision intact. However, they are requesting changes they believe would improve the project's functionality, as well as address some infrastructure concerns that come up. So just in case anybody's not familiar with this site, it's located just north of Elmhurst Drive and Swan Lake Drive, the intersection down here. Up to the north, Pastor Drive, you have Skyview Lane. Then, of course, you have the Oak View and Reed View schools over in this area, just to the west of the project. So the original approval, which was 2011, that's the map that you see on your left, that had 12 residential lots. Lot sizes were a minimum of 15,000 square feet and up, and there are about 5.6 acres of open space. All that is proposed to remain the same with this modification. Then, as you remember, in 2012, they eliminated the cul-de-sac, so they took out the cul-de-sac over here, and instead put in this flag lot. They also, you approved a relocation of the emergency vehicle access, which went out to the end of Street A down to Elmhurst. That was removed and placed up along the lot by Skyview Lane. So this is the map that is proposed today, or at least the changes, and there's kind of a, a list of changes that they'd like to make, and I'll kind of walk through these. The first one is, they propose to remove the flag lot, which is, used to be in this area, and they're going to have all five lots now aligned on the east side of Street A. What that would do is expand this open space area, although the acreage remains the same, I'll explain that in a minute. It does provide more open space up in this area, which provides a buffer with the adjacent property on the east side of the project. There's also a small wetlands area in that new expanded open space area that, instead of being filled, will now be preserved as part of the open space. So on the other side of the project, the open space lot B, which was a proposed detention facility, that has shifted from up in this area, shifted south, and that is so it better incorporates the natural drainage on site. The existing or proposed pedestrian path that would go through that area to the school would remain, so no changes with that. As a result of this shift, Street A is now going to be shifted down to the south. And then, the, probably, the, you know, the biggest change is lot seven is about 90 feet more south than it was previously. So when they looked at the engineering for the project and were looking at the connection, the sewer and water lines are going to connect from the end of Street A, which is up here down to Elmhurst, they, they found out that there were two large water lines, City of Roseville water lines that went, that are down in Elmhurst, which obstructs any connection to sewer and water. So they had to go back and talk to Environmental Engineering, San Juan Water District, to figure out exactly how they're going to make a connection. So working with both agencies, they were able to now connect up on Pastor Drive. What that does, it requires a stepped sewer system that will get the sewer up to Pastor Drive, and then as far as San Juan Water District, they've reviewed the proposal to make that connection at Pastor Drive. There's sufficient water flow and supply, and so they're okay with that. There's correspondence to that effect, you know, in your materials. The other thing that it does is now this Linda Creek Tributary is now, doesn't need to be impacted at all. No utilities going through there, there's no EVA, so that will remain as an open space area. The last change they're proposing to make is they want to remove the sidewalk on the east side of Street A. Originally approved, there was sidewalk, four-foot sidewalks on both sides. Staff, we don't see a big problem with that, just because of the fact it is a cul-de-sac, just goes to the end to the open space area. We don't think there's any safety issues of people having to get to one side of the street or the other, so we support that request. I just want to put this slide up that shows a comparison of the approved map right now, which is November 2012, and then what is being proposed now. And one thing I do want to point out is, in your staff report, the map that is attached has a September date, and the one you'll see up here is October, and you'll actually have a hard copy of that in front of you, hopefully. We had to make an adjustment to keep the open space numbers exactly the same as the original approval, and so what happened is, the slot line right here on the north side of Lot B was adjusted slightly to make the necessary compensation. So any action you take today would be approving the October map, not the September map. So staff's in support of these modifications. We do believe they bring more functionality to the project. It fixed the infrastructure issues that had come up. So with that, we'll get to the recommendation. We're asking two things. One, we want you to find out the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration and addendum and mitigation monitoring program satisfies the requirements of SEQA, and we are asking that you approve the modification to the map and use permit, subject to the findings and modified conditions in your staff report. That concludes my report. Any questions? I'm happy to answer them.
Wayne?
I have a question about the emergency road. Has that disappeared? Is there concern of not having that now?
Hey, so it, so November of 2012, there, there's always an emergency access to the project site, and there still is to, today, but this EVA that went out to Elmhurst in 2012 was relocated to Skyview Lane. So it goes, it goes up through the slot and out Skyview Lane.
I'm not seeing it on the 13 map. Where, where is it up there?
Right through there.
Of course, there it is.
And that was something in the south, just real quick, South Placer Fire District, you know, agreed to back in November.
EJ, the stepped sewer system, that's a lift station?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
It means it's running uphill.
They're actually, sorry, engineering and surveying, they're actually individual lifts from each home. So they're, they're collect, and then they take the water, the wastewater gets pumped from each home site.
What, to the next one, and then the next one, or? I guess kind of, there's this question, how does that work?
It's a force main. It pumps to a force main.
So rather than a homeowner association maintain central lift station, everybody has their own and responsible for their own maintenance?
Pumps at each home site in the, I believe it'll be in the, the front yard areas, and they'll pump into this force main that at some point gets to Pastor Drive, and then it'll turn to a gravity feed into the existing sewer line.
What, does it go from tank to tank, or how do they get the? You know, once it gets into the main line, if it's an uphill, is there, I guess I'm having trouble visualizing how this works. You have all these houses and lots, and each one of them's got a tank and a pump.
They pump into the force main, and it forces it out the top.
Right, right. So, and Facility Services does this infrequently, but they, they agree to it because of the, the difficulties in sewer-ing these parcels.
It's a leak in your system. It's a real leak, you know it.
It's, it's, each, each tank is, is maintained by the county for solids and, and what have you, but. but the, the wastewater, that's what gets pumped into a force main line that goes to the public sewer line and then converts to like a gravity flow into a manhole.
So then the pumps put pressure on the main line and that is what pushes it up?
Right, right.
Are they, is that just gray water, so the septic tank is, is on the property and it's processing solids and, but this is the gray water then is pumped into that line?
That's right, that's right.
So, so it's like a septic tank then?
It's, it's a hybrid, really, yeah.
They'll have individual lines going out of it, or do those periodically, I guess, have to be pumped, don't they, by some?
That's, that's why there's, some of the conditions in here are about providing access to Facility Services for maintenance, because they'll, they'll need to come, you know, lift the lid and maybe pump out the, the septic box every so often on each property.
And so then if a pump fails, I guess somebody finds out the hard way that their pump failed?
Yeah, and in that, that's where I'd, I'd need to talk to Facility Services, because I, I don't know if it's on the homeowner to fix the pump or if it's a county Facility Services part of the maintenance agreement, but it is in the CSA.
I think there's an alarm on that that goes off if there's a problem. Because the house I'm living in has a tank that pumps to the street and it has an alarm on it.
Oh, okay.
And I assume that's probably code.
Wake up in the morning here?
Okay, well, I think I'm.
I'll have, perhaps, we can question our applicant on that.
Well, I have one more question. One more question. Okay. Through Lot B, there's the idea that there's access to the school?
Correct, correct.
Is that, is there going to be a find-your-own-trail, or is that going to be a constructed pathway?
You know, I'd have to look in the conditions of approval as far as what the width of that trail, but my understanding is it's a paved, a paved trail that would come off of the sidewalk that's on the southwest side and connect through. But I'm, and then on the school side, I'm not sure what it would connect to over on the school side. I'm not, it's kind of a natural area where people go through today. Just kind, you know, trespassing through the, the property, but it would, you know, allow for that continued connection.
So it's still connected to Lot B with the changes? Okay. And so you say this trail's going to be on the west side, but the sidewalk's going to be on the east side, right?
No, 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 no. So, so the actual sidewalk will be located on the west side of the cul-de-sac. They're removing it from the east side.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it all, it all connects.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If the applicant would step forward?
Hello, I'm Darren Anderson. I represent Granite Bay Development. We're at forty-two ten Douglas Boulevard in Granite Bay. It's a pleasure to be before you and to have our project before you to hopefully get approved. It's also been tough but good working with staff, and we appreciate just your opportunity to be before you and we hope that give us a favorable ruling. I'm here to answer any questions and probably prefer to, once you open it to the public, if they bring any other issues up, be happy to come back and maybe address some of those. You had some step sewer system questions. I'm not an engineer, but all I can say is that Heather Knudsen, our engineer king, engineering, has been interacting with them. There's going to be a full sewer plan that has to be developed and that will be incorporated into our improvement plans. And this system's been used by the county before, so there's a whole bunch of checks and balances that's already been developed. And there's a thick manual that kind of relates to the specifications. And then there's a whole series of items that have to be notified and noticed to the home buyers as to how that system works and what their responsibilities are and what the county's responsibilities are. So all that gets pulled together in a package that's presented not only to the homeowner, but also, like I said, is incorporated into the improvement plans. With that, if you, unless you have any direct questions of me.
Do we?
Well, maybe just one, just, just for clarification on the, on the safety exit out to Skyview or?
Right.
As far as the fire department goes, just for interest, what type of mechanism opening are they requiring you to put there? Chain and lock, or is it going to have a button the fire department can push and open the gate, or?
Yeah, there's, there's a gate that's going to be there. They have, they provided a specification. I don't know, EJ, did we get the, their letter incorporated into the package? I don't remember.
Uh, yes, and let's see what exhibit that is.
Anyway, there's a specific specification that fits with what they require, and it's outlined in their will-serv letter to us. It's, should be in your packet there.
That's Attachment H at the end of the staff report packet.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions? Seeing none now, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to open up the meeting to the public comment on this particular agenda item. Is anybody there willing or wants to speak on it? Please step forward, give us your name.
Good morning. My name is Roland Delgado. I'm a neighbor to the south of the project. First, I, I would request a little bit of clarification that perhaps EJ or Mr. Anderson might be able to answer. There was a statement made a moment ago that the path to the school, and I'm assuming the elementary school, will continue to remain. Is that your understanding as well?
That's correct. There, yeah, there's no change to the approved pedestrian trail through that open space.
Okay.
That remains.
If I may, I'd like to approach the map, and even though I'm not that tall, perhaps I can stretch far enough to point something out to you.
There's a, there's a pointer too there, Roman. The top button.
Ah, excellent. I'll try and steady my hand here. Okay, so if we're looking at the, if we're looking at the November two thousand and twelve map, the open space Lot B is this one right here. There is a gate to the elementary school in approximately this area, a couple of trees right there, okay? And that would be fairly clear to see how you could have access, whether it's a paved path, decomposed granite, or just dirt path, you can access that from the street. Under the new plan, the gate is right here, which is behind the new residential Lot Four, I believe. Yes, Lot Four. So my question is, how can you provide access to the school, to the existing gate, without requiring any changes here? And this area here is pretty rough. There's some embankments here, you can see those elevation lines getting a little steep. So that's my question.
Yeah, I might, I might defer to the applicant as far as how to make that connection, but my, my, I imagine that, you know, a new gate would have to be put in place to accommodate that.
Okay. And the reason I ask that is I've, I've, I just have been through these proceedings before where there were certain assurances or maybe even conditions made in other developments where something like this just fell through the cracks and didn't happen. So I think this is significant enough to be proposed in light of the fact that the, the new owner and developer is stating that they will continue to maintain that. So perhaps we can answer that a little later. I'll just run through a couple of my points here. I won't take up too much of your time. First of all, I believe several of the infrastructure changes are good and beneficial and probably almost necessary, so I applaud the, the new owner on that. I do oppose the new proposed project for a couple of reasons. First is the new project is essentially moving the entire, or the new proposal is moving the entire project south, as was mentioned previously. While I appreciate the addition of open space, and I haven't calculated it myself, I have studied the map and would draw the conclusion that the additional open space is relatively minor, I don't think that that offsets the impact of moving the entire development closer to the wetlands preservation usement. I think that's a real, that's not a good compromise, in my, in my opinion. So moving that, this lot here, Lot number seven, I believe, yes, seven, and also Lot Eight over here are both moved significantly closer, as is the street, and the potential for impact of the wetlands is far greater, I believe. The second reason is, having been involved in this process for many years, many years of negotiations with the previous owners, both myself and many of the residents and neighbors in the area, we worked hard, really hard, and reached what we thought was a reasonable compromise with the previous owner and the previous owner's development staff, in which we, the neighbors or the development, was approved and accepted with an increase in density of approximately a hundred percent. Or maybe the increase in density isn't quite right, but I think it still works out that way. Previously zoned for approximately two and a half acre lots, which would provide for, depending on the layout, anywhere between five, six, and seven lots, and now we're looking at twelve lots, so that's how I come up with my hundred percent increase. So with that being said, here we are again, modifying it again now. Granted, we're not going greater than twelve lots, but we're making changes to a plan that we had spent several years working closely with the developer, the previous owner, and here we are looking at another change. It, it just kind of, especially with the change, which was one of the biggest things, the wetlands preservationary impacts and density, I just don't feel that the current change is warranted in that regard. The other infrastructure changes and items along those lines, I, I think are wise and good. So that's where I stand, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. With someone else? Please approach.
Hi, thank you. My name is Tammy Holman. I live to the west. I don't know if this map, is this map up somewhere? The comparison map? Or just the map where it would show where my house is in comparison, just for retail purposes? Yeah, you don't have anything that has it where the layout's even on it?
Not the, yeah, not, this is what we have.
Oh. I have a, I have a little, I have a little bit of a different map. Can I, is it preferably that I walk, can I walk up, or is it for that point? I'm just more visual. Anyway, I'm Tammy Holman. I live right here in this house, so this one's my house. So I'm kind of like the closest to the project. This project first started back in, the first time I, we ever heard about was two thousand and four, and there was forty-three homes. And that, and the only reason I'm going back a little bit of his history, because I don't want to reiterate what Mr. Roland Delgado had said. So, but I want a little bit of the history, because when I, I came up here and I spoke for the planning commission in August thirteenth of two thousand and nine for the same project. So afterwards, one of the chairman of, one of you individuals had said that we're all, we understand you're very emotional about this. Well, this is my home. This isn't, I knew when I bought my home, I researched it. I bought, I bought the land, bare land. I totally researched the whole project that would go anywhere around it before I decided to build what house I was going to build. I researched it and found it was only going to be five to six homes. So when I built my house, I had no idea that, because the planning, the Granite Bay, and I'm getting nervous, but the Granite Bay community plan had never been changed. So I was pretty sure that, I knew that, I knew, and I'm for development, I'm in construction, so I'm totally for development. I just believed you have to follow rules. I had to when I built my house, and I would expect whoever, you know, has the piece of land that they also follow the same rules I had, I had to follow. And we buy, we build our homes to appreciate, not depreciate. And when the project first came out in two thousand and four, it was forty-three homes. And then it came back out in two thousand and eight, four years later, twenty-nine homes, but a senior community. And when we came and we spoke at the planning commission, even our Matt, when it went to the MAC, it was seven to zero, and it was unanimously declined, yet it came here and it was still, well, we'll see. And there was even MAC members that were no longer on the MAC committee that came up here and spoke, because it was, we were so, there's so, the, it was like the developer and the, the property owner never really worked with the neighbors. So now I'm going to fast forward. Now, I, I know now the project, well, it then went to the board and somehow it never went to the MAC committee to get twelve homes. It went to the board on December fourteenth of two thousand and ten during the Christmas season. I don't even remember being notified, so of course I wasn't at the board, that the, and then all of a sudden it went, it did, it increased a hundred percent. So if it was five to six homes, now there's twelve, it's a hundred percent. So based on, back to me, yeah, as a property owner, that does concern me that it was a backdoor deal that happened. Even one of the board supervisors mentioned it at the board, the board meeting, that, well, it sure seems like a backdoor deal. Why wouldn't you want to wait, you know, and let it go to the MAC committee and let it go up? And of course, it didn't, it got approved. The, the guy who owned it, I knew personally, yet he never came to me to want to talk to me about it, of what he was going to build. He did own all the other properties by the court that's on, on the south. He owned all those properties and built homes comparable to mine. So then he sold the project earlier this year, and Mr. Anderson, apparently when they decided to redo this map, which I agree, it seems great in everything except for moving the lots. I had asked, well, did you speak with EJ? Because we had, seemed like we really worked on this for a long time to get the lots exactly where they were positioned. So once this got approved, I realized now there's nothing I can do, there's twelve lots, there's nothing I can do. Okay, we did, we met with Euler and the developer, the previous, not this one, on January twenty-seventh, two thousand and eleven, and came up with a plan for these twelve lots. So this has been going on since two thousand and four. We kind of finally meet, even meet with the board, you know, Euler and say, this is what we're going to do. And now, Mr. Anderson then came to me. Apparently, they were told that they, you know, the county, the planning commission didn't have, or I don't know what you're called, planning something. That they didn't have a problem with the new configuration, but they had to talk to the property owner, which was on the lot that was the closest to a lot, because I have actually three homes that will actually be adjacent to my lot. So when Mr. Anderson came, I listened to him and, and it, it's, I like a lot of the changes that I think are a lot more beneficial, but moving the lots down, I do not. We worked very, very hard at what we got before. Now, the way that the lot is moving, it's now even further down south, which to me impacts even more what I see. So for me, I, I do not approve the new map. I told Mr. Anderson when we met in July that I did not approve it and that I felt like, since there was such an opposition to this and so much was put on, that it should come back to the MAC at least, so that all the rest of the neighbors could have a chance to say something, instead of having to drive up here. I don't have time to drive up here. I'm hoping my officials represent me, that I don't have to take my own personal time off work to have to come up to try and represent myself. And since I've been doing this since two thousand and four, it's a long, it's a, it's a lot for a homeowner. To take out of our time, and yeah, I do realize it's emotional, like it was said the last time when I spoke in two thousand and nine, but this is my home. I built it for an investment too and for my future. So I knew when I built it that there was going to be five to six lots. If I knew I was building next to a Long's Drugs, I'd have nothing to say. But I knew only five to six homes, not twelve. So then again, we work with the developer to come up with a plan of where the houses would be situated, and then now it gets. of where the houses would be situated, and then now it gets changed. I then, when they, when they came to me earlier in July, when I said, "No, I would not approve it," and then to have this still happen, instead of not even going to the MAC committee, I just think that that's some of the information that needs to be known. But I appreciate, you know, I know that, just a homeowner, and I know developers sometimes have a lot bigger pool. I never thought this would happen. I absolutely never thought that, that I'd be, having to still be fighting this since 2004, so it just kind of seems kind of crazy. But anyway, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to step forward?
Hi, I'm Amy Hamilton, and I also, I live down to the south. And I was just curious of maybe the developers or the new owner, being it off of Pasture Drive, I know it's very difficult if you go to the high school, which I did, Granite Bay, which is right on the other side of Feist Park there. Coming back from both the school, as well as, if you're not walking, of course, if you're picking up your child from school or driving home from high school, is it going to be a difficult thing to have to go all the way back through Crocker and Pasture Drive? Is that going to be a traffic issue? I was just curious, as the new owner, if that might be something that they foresee being a problem.
We'll have to step out into that when, later on. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll close the public session and bring the meeting back to the board for discussion. Richard?
Yeah, I guess I'd like to go back to the trail. I was just looking through the conditions here, and it goes to the school. And at any rate, we were thinking that it would be a paved trail that goes through Lot B, but at least, so far, I haven't seen a condition in here that really nails that down, particularly if it's going to require a new gate or new access to the school. And maybe another question is, is this somehow going to be a dedicated right, dedicated right-of-way or access trail? Yeah, I'm looking, yeah. Let me see, I'm looking on page seven or 27, or it's like 14 and 15, we're talking about road trails.
Do you want to say, Paul?
I'll take the one on the dedication of the easements. It looks like on condition 38, new condition 38, on page 17, number C or letter C, dedicated 12 and a half foot multipurpose easement.
What page is that on?
Seventeen.
Page 10 is 27?
Page 18.
Page 18, on the bottom corner of the handwritten numbers.
Actually, we may have to modify that one. It looks like that one's adjacent to all highway easements, so we probably should modify that to include through that, the lot, the open space lot.
You say that's under item H?
C.
But there's several conditions that deal with the landscape easements for sidewalks and trails. But what we can do is make sure there's specific language speaking to, you know, the trail connection to the school. And I think, you know, from the, from the beginning of this project, there's always been the, you know, our understanding is that there would always be a trail, so we never questioned that. But it seems appropriate to have a specific language that speaks to that connection.
Right, I think, you know, that's my experience. Every time we talked about it, we talked about that trail being an important aspect. But it seems like we probably need to have it specifically in the condition so that it doesn't get dropped.
Okay, so, thank you, Rebecca. So, going to condition number one, which is usually the parameters of the project, where it talks about what is approved. At the last part of the first paragraph, it says, "A pedestrian path connecting to the Ridgeview and Oak Hill schools." So, that's included in the approval. Then, another condition, number 22, under recreational facilities, you know, also includes the trail. So, where we would normally look at it, buried in the conditions, it's actually in the first condition stating what the approvals are for. And that's how it stands now, and no changes, no changes are proposed to, you know, remove it or change it. As far as, I guess, question two, engineering and surveying, is if we need to put any additional language in as far as dedication of that trail easement, under the dedication section?
I'm not seeing.
That was under the 38, condition number 38.
That would typically be parks or a trail easement.
Okay.
Maybe we can just modify 38, what is it, 38C, and with just adding the language, and through Lot B. So, the multipurpose, there'd be a dedication of a 12 and a half foot multipurpose easement adjacent to all highway easements, and then add, and through Lot B.
Actually, Paul, multipurpose easement is a different easement. That's for, usually for utilities along the back of the right-of-way, so utility-type cable lines, things like that. H talks about private landscape and sidewalk maintenance easements. Maybe we could expand on that to.
Make it more specific.
Dedication of trail easement.
Just add, add to that.
Yeah, and maybe, I think you were thinking multipurpose trail easement in that other one, so maybe call it a multipurpose trail easement. Call out a width.
So, this would be part of H, then?
Yes.
And I would suggest use the specific language that we used in condition number one about a pedestrian path connecting to the Ridgeview and Oak Hill schools. At that easement, we'll refer to that.
How does it connect, though? If it goes across Lot B, it's going to nowhere.
Yeah, I think that's an issue, because that lot, some of those lots to be redesigned is to get that trail to the school property.
Pick up somewhere else going.
Are you going to ask the school to move their gate?
I have a question, yes, considering the trail that's there now that we're talking about keeping and now moving it, where does that trail actually enter the school grounds? Does it come up against a tree or a wall or something, or how does that work?
Yeah, maybe I'll defer to the, maybe have the applicant come up at this time to see how that connection is going to be made. And that may require coordination with the, you know, with the school district.
So, we met with Linda Rooney to present this to her. She's the superintendent of Eureka Unified School District. They reviewed our plans, and they approved of what we're doing here. So, the, how does, you push this?
Do you want to change site?
Uh-oh. Gone the wrong way. What do I do?
Lights out.
I pushed that one. Just going to try to get, oh, there we go. Is this it right here for the? Yeah. Okay. So, anyway, I would assume that this gate would be moved. Though, these kinds of issues are typically worked out at the improvement plan stage, how it connects. The other thing, too, is that part of the reason why we moved Lot B the way we did at the angle that it is, its northern boundary, is so that there can be a direct connection right into the property line. Anyway, I mean, it's going to get worked out at the improvement plan stage. The other thing that I'd like to just add is that we're trying to keep that open space Lot B area as natural as possible, and we would actually prefer a DG path through there because we think that that would just be more natural. The other thing, too, is that you can see in this area right here, this is where the natural drainage actually occurs. And so, that's where we're proposing the detention to occur. The way the plan currently worked, with the detention happening over here, it would mean, you know, doing something unnatural to the site development. And so, that's why we proposed moving things there. So, anyway, we think we've come up with a good compromise, not only with the school district, but also just make what makes sense from a natural drainage connection, and we've got a direct connection into their property by the way we've redrawn Lot B.
So, you've identified the connection point on the ground?
Yeah.
And it, yeah, we heard earlier that there's kind of a little draw there or something that would be, make it more difficult?
Yeah, so right now, the trail would pretty much run right along the southerly end of, or southerly boundary of Lot 4, but within Lot B. And then what would have to happen is, is that there would be some, some way of getting from here to the, I mean, you're at the property line, the school's property line is right here. So, the trail would sit here, and then you enter it that way.
Okay. So, that, it'll be looked at, I guess, as far as the details of it. But if you're going to use a DG surface, what, the homeowners association's going to maintain that?
Yes. The homeowners association's responsible for maintaining all of, all of Lot A and all of Lot B.
Including whatever trail.
And then the trail, and also the EVA up here. And that, that's a condition, I'm not sure which number it is, but it's a condition of approval.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I think that brings us back to whatever changes we might be talking about here. Maybe we want to think about it a little bit more, or?
So, no, we have some, some language changing condition 38H on page 18 of the conditions, bottom right corner of page 18. And the new language, starting on H, would be dedicate to Plaster County, a 15-foot multipurpose trail easement over the pedestrian path to the school site over Lot B. And then, it will continue the language that's already there, private landscape and sidewalk maintenance easements to the HOA as appropriate, and so on.
Okay.
So, what that does is puts a trail easement in place that has been dedicated to the county, so the HOA later on could not decide to, you know, quit, claim that away or make it away, it would belong to the county.
Okay.
And the connection point of that trail would be determined later?
Yeah, probably during the improvement plan process. It is a condition of approval, so the applicant is going to have to show us how he's going to meet that, meet that requirement. And that will involve, you know, probably coordinating with the school district on that. But improvement plans won't be signed until that has been figured out.
Any other questions on this subject?
Well, no, that he asked for DG, is that, is that acceptable to?
For a multipurpose trails, yeah, I mean, the ultimate decision will probably be by, from our Parks Department, who will, who will look at the trail surfaces and, you know, whether or not there's any other, you know, requirements for the surfacing of that path. And that's all under the DRC review condition.
The current trail that's there now is unimproved totally, correct? It's just been.
No, it's, it's just a, I think, a natural.
It's been worn through by, by use and not no improvements.
Right, but we, you know, we want to make sure we recognize that and then, you know, improve it, so it could be a real trail.
See, one, maybe one more question of staff, just to clarify. Originally, when we were looking at this project, it was zoned for, I mean, the zoning permitted five or six houses, but if I remember correctly, the last time that this project was approved, it actually went to the board of supervisors because it required a rezone, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. You know, going, going back, you know, four years or so, it did go to the, the board supervisors for a rezone. And I want to say it was a community plan amendment as, as well. It was a community plan amendment as well. And, and at that time, there were a number of lots proposed. The board did not, they did not buy off on the 20 or so lots, or I don't know what it was at the time, well above the 12. And so, they sent it, sent them back to redesign their project, and they remanded that back to your commission. So, when it did come to your commission, the, the project was downsized to the 12 lots, and that's what was approved at that time. That did not go back to the board after that, that was the approval. And, you know, since that time, the, the previous owner, the pastors, came in once, which was the end of last year, just to make those changes with removing the cul-de-sac and changing the EVA. So, so, yes, all those approvals have, have already occurred, and now, you know, we're, you know, working on these.
The main, main, just, the main change here is a little bit of adjustment of lots, but, but it's the utilities that really are driving this current proposal.
Absolutely, they, because the project will not work connecting downtown Merce Drive as far as water and sewer lines.
Okay.
So, they, they had to find some alternative, and, you know, fortunately, they, you know, they, there is viable solutions to both of those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I'd like to have staff address a couple other issues that were brought up. One is about the traffic. Is that going to be an issue with these 12 lots and extra traffic on those roads that the lady mentioned?
Let me address that, Rebecca Tabor from Engineering and Surveying. The project went through an environmental review, mitigated negative declaration, and during that process, and it is attached to your staff report, page 70, is the page I'm looking at, the, the discussion under the transportation and traffic. As part of that process, a traffic impact analysis was prepared in 2008 by MRO engineers, and the 12-lot project will generate 115 average daily trips. The AM peak hour trips is approximately nine during the weekdays, and the PM peak hour trips, approximately 12 during the weekdays. Although there's a slight increase in traffic and the number of daily trips, this, this amount will not significantly impact the capacity of the existing local roadways. We do have a mitigation measure, which is standard, that traffic mitigation fees be paid by, at the time of each building permit. And those fees act to, to help mitigate the impacts of increased traffic on the regional roadways, the, and local roadways. So, that has been accounted for and, and found to be not significant for this 12-lot project.
Okay, another issue that was brought up was the Lot 7 moving south. How many feet, and we don't have the map that shows the 2 on there anymore, but how many feet south did that lot line move on Lot 7?
We were trying to get the exact dimensions of that, and I misstated earlier, there was about 90 feet. It's, it's actually more or less 50 feet south. The actual cul-de-sac is, has moved, you know, maybe, maybe five feet to the south. So, the, the actual cul-de-sac hasn't moved as much. It has been extended slightly. But the, you know, Lot 7 has moved to the south. There is a condition that all the, you know, all the lots along that west property line have a 10-foot landscape easement. That was one of the concerns before, as far as, you know, providing additional buffer to, you know, the, the few residents that are there. I might also point out that there, you know, there is an open space easement that separates those residential lots and Ms. Holman's residents. But bottom line, the, the lot does shift south about 50 feet, and Darren, I believe that's correct.
Half of that. Yes, please, if you have the answer to that question, we'd like to hear it.
Yeah, the, the road really comes down just, just barely. That Lot 7 can, it's about 90 feet that it comes down to the south, that's my understanding. What's interesting, though, is that this, this, what EJ was talking about is this whole area right here is an open space easement. The distance from where the previous lot ended and where this The distance from where the previous lot ended and where this lot now comes to is still maintained at almost, it's over two hundred feet from here. Either, even if you go back to what's actually approved on here or whether you go to this lot seven that's been moved south, just, just a bit. So this distance to that home over here, Mrs. Holman's home, is, is still the same. It's, it's over two hundred feet and then this is a whole open space easement. We met with Marlene George, who lives right here, who originally, and what we, if we were to go, if this weren't to get approved, we could go build what was approved and got this long flag lot that the fire department didn't like. And then, of course, Mrs. George did not appreciate a home being built right next to her. The other thing is, is that when we did our wetlands delineation, we found that there were wetlands in these areas. So another gentleman talked about how wetlands might be further impacted by moving south here, the road just a few feet, and then this ninety feet. In fact, we're actually preserving more wetlands by the way we've redesigned this. So, anyway, bottom line is, we think it's a better plan. We think we've maintained the distances to our neighbors over here. And like Ms. Holman said, I, I went out of my way to meet with her, enter her home and to try to work with her and, and we had a very cordial meeting. We just agreed to disagree on what we thought was best. And that's why we're here before you to make the hard right decision for us, hopefully.
Let's see, I have maybe one more.
Sure.
Just, yeah, kind of going back to maybe an issue that we've discussed earlier on the staff sewer process.
Yeah.
And I guess the one thing that still maybe a little bit of question in my mind is where the homeowner's responsibility rests in terms of maintenance of the, of the pumps and the system?
Yeah, it's my, yeah, it's my understanding that the homeowner maintains the system itself. If the pump goes bad, it's their responsibility to replace that, that pump. However, there is an E, there's a condition in our conditions of approval that, that requires us to have an easement there that allows the county service district to get in there and clean out the tank and take care of that. And each of these homeowners will actually be paying, I think, thirty-five or forty bucks extra per month on their bill in order to pay for county services to address that. But in terms of the actual structural integrity of the tank or the pump itself, those are homeowner-owned items and it would be their responsibility, if their pump were to fail, to replace that. And that'll be all outlined, there's another condition of approval in there that talks about the, the manual, the neighborhood, what do they call them? Neighborhood manual? I forget what it's called. Developer notebook, and then there's a, there's a manual in there that refers to what has to be in there and there's a full, you have to have a map in there, you have to show them exactly where this, where the tank is and then you have to specifically outline what is their responsibility in that manual.
So I, I think I heard you say, like, if, if the tank itself has to be pumped out, that would be the county service district that would do that?
Correct.
As far as the rest of the maintenance, that's the homeowner's responsibility?
Yes.
I have a question on the landscaping easement. Is there requirements to actually plant something in that and what that would be? Or is it just, you know, left kind of open to the homeowner or the developer?
Let me, let me research that real quick, just to see if I can find that for you.
Do you have an easier question? You have an easier question?
And so refer to number, number five. This will be one of the conditions required to be met. It says landscape plan requirement and improvement plans shall provide details of the location and specifications of all proposed landscaping and irrigation, including the size, species, and number of evergreen, evergreen trees, it states, are required within the ten-foot wide landscape easements as approved by the DRC. So it specifically says evergreen and that would be up to the development review committee to, you know, make the final determination of what those are.
So it does obviously require something to be planted in there?
That's correct.
All right, do I hear any other questions from the board, for the staff or the applicant? Okay, in that case, do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would motion that the planning commission find that the previously adopted mitigated negative declaration and addendum and mitigated monitoring program satisfies the requirement of SEQA and that we approve the modification to the vesting tentative subdivision map and conditional use permit with condition thirty-eight H as modified in this report, subject to the attached SEQA findings and modified condition approved.
I've got a motion in a second. Call for a vote, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion carries.
And then, I guess, what we wanna make sure is that's the October two thousand thirteen revised map. And then it'd be wise probably to?
Appeal.
Appeal rights?
Yes. Anyone wishing to appeal this decision has ten calendar days. You file with the county, it's a fee of five hundred and thirty-six dollars and you can see the clerk afterwards about that. We'll take a break for five minutes before the last agenda item.
No. Oh, we're good. So I, so as I was saying, this is our fourth community center workshop. The previous three, we have gone over what, what, getting direction from you and getting input from the public about what you thought was appropriate with regard to the new zoning text amendment that will be the new ordinance which governs community centers. At the last meeting, it was a long and depth meeting we went over. I believe it was thirteen or fifteen points. You gave specific direction to me in almost all instances about what you would like to see in the ordinance. And I went back and I drafted a draft ordinance or zoning text amendment is what we, we can refer to it as, for event centers that I think embodies all those things. There are a few things that may need to be fine-tuned as we go through them. But what I'd like to do is simply move right into the ordinance and go over what, what I came back with as a draft ordinance. So with that, the first, excuse me, looking at the wrong staff report. The first issue that we probably should discuss is the five definitions. No significant changes there. They are as were proposed in the third workshop. I have placed them in the ordinance in the way that we talked about them. The second issue is, you'll see that under C, there is an actual chart that tells the entitlement requirement based on your zone district and based on the type of event center that you would be. You should notice that everything, with the exception of community centers and commercial event centers, requires a use permit. Commercial, uh, community centers and commercial event centers do not require a use permit in either the C two or C three, which refers to general commercial, which is C two, or heavy commercial, which is C three. The next section is D, which is the beginning of what, what has been referred to during the workshops as performance standards, their development and operational standards. The one thing I wanna point out is we go through the development standards or operational standards, you will see that I don't always call out every kind of event center simply because that section really doesn't apply to that type of event center. For instance, in parking or, let's say, access center, access standards, I might not mention a commercial event center because that would be governed by other sections of our ordinance. So essentially, if I didn't call it out, it's because it is covered in other areas. Most of the time, what you will see is, community centers or commercial event centers won't be mentioned and we'll be talking about agricultural event centers with regard to standards. So keep that in mind as we go forward. So with that, under number one, parking, what we came up with was, the direction that was given to staff was that it should be two-point-five guests, uh, excuse me, one parking space per two-point-five guests with one additional parking space for each permanent employee. And that's what one says. Okay, and at any point, because it is a workshop, feel to jump in or ask me questions or say that's not what I remember we agreed to. The second part would be access standards. Essentially, what it came back with was access roads to community centers, commercial event centers, and agricultural event centers should comply with county code, state and local fire safe standards as determined by Plaster County and the serving fire agency. And then there's a few other caveats. If it's a community center or commercial event center, et cetera, is off a county-maintained road, they need an encroachment permit. If a community center, event center, agricultural event center are accessed by private roads, they have to provide proof that they have the adequate minimum roadway to accommodate the proposed size. Then we move on to minimum parcel size. And again, the reason community centers and commercial event centers aren't mentioned, as I said earlier, is because those are governed by other sections of our ordinance. So all we're talking about is a small agricultural event center, intermediate agricultural event center, or large agricultural event center. And so the small is ten, intermediate agricultural, and I say ten, I say minimum lot size. Small agricultural event centers would have to be on a minimum parcel size of ten acres. Intermediate agricultural event centers would have to be on a minimum parcel size of twenty. And large agricultural event centers should be on a minimum of forty thousand, uh, forty thousand, excuse me, forty acres. The next one is, number four is setbacks. All agricultural event centers shall have to have outdoor activities associated with the event center, a minimum of two hundred feet from exterior property lines, with the exception that parking may be allowed in that buffer zone if it's determined to be appropriate through the use permit. Okay? Event size, pretty self-explanatory. The three that are the most important are small agricultural event centers should be limited to a hundred guests, intermediate to two hundred guests, and large agricultural event centers to four hundred guests. Number of, of events, we had quite a discussion about that. I'll tell you where I landed with regard to community centers and commercial event centers specified by the use permit. Agricultural event centers, I landed at twenty-six. As you remember, during this process, I have researched eleven different counties. The events seem to fall between six and twenty-four. We're not limited to twenty-six events. If you don't think that's enough, or if you think it's too many, we can adjust downward. The way I came to that number is I simply decided that one event a week, cut it in half, you wind up with twenty-six. There really is, as I've said in this, this process the whole time, with regard to events, it's fairly subjective about what, what would or would not be appropriate. Twenty-six might be too many, twenty-six might not be enough. So I would look for a little further direction or a little, a little bit of discussion about whether you wanna go with twenty-six, a little bit more local class.
Say, George, I?
Yeah.
Have a question here.
Right.
I've been thinking a little bit about the word event.
Events, yes.
And, you know, you know, this being the fall season, you know, you go to pumpkin patches and, and Apple Hill and all that kind of stuff.
Uh-huh.
They're agricultural events.
Mm-hmm.
But you know, the word event, is that like, you know, if somebody plans an event over a weekend? Or a three-day event? Is that one event?
No. Okay, well, let me take a step back. I have to put it in context. Some of the pumpkin patches and things you see, they fall under a different section of our ordinance called seasonal sales. Seasonal sales allows for Christmas tree farms and pumpkin patches and that sort of thing. If you are an actual agricultural event center, okay, then if you have an event, a commercial event, that would count towards your events. We do have other provisions if you're not an agricultural event center and you want to have some kind of event. You could get a temporary outdoor event permit. You're allowed up to two of those a year. So that could be covered that way. Additionally, the one component I know that's swirling in everyone's mind, yours, mine, and the people behind us, is how does this all play into the WINE ordinance update when we get there? Some of this is going to have to cross a little bit. But if you're an agricultural event center and you have an event, it's going to count towards the events.
Okay.
That was kind of a circuitous answer. Did I answer your question? I kind of went on a tangent.
If you plan an event on Saturday, that's an event.
If you're an agricultural event center with a use permit, or are you saying if, like, give me the context, like, you own ten acres or what?
Well, yeah, you own ten acres and you schedule an event that lasts three days. But you kept coming, well, I guess what I heard you say is you have, you would come in then and get a...
Temporary outdoor event permit.
Okay.
If you weren't entitled through either a community center, a commercial event center, agricultural event center, for an event of that type, I think you would need a TOE unless it is a completely private event, like you're having a family reunion and you're not charging and you're not doing anything like that, then you would just be subject to our normal ordinances like the noise ordinance and that sort of thing.
Okay. And so, you know, it's one event, one day?
One event, one day.
In the agricultural event center, right?
Oh, I see what you're getting at. So if you have an agricultural event center and you're going to have a three-day event, is that three events or is that one event?
And I'm hearing you say that's three.
It's a good question. I haven't really, I have not thought about that that much. I think if... It would. It absolutely would have to be according to my definition. And maybe we need to go back and look at that a little bit, but as it sits now, I would say it is three events.
Sort of twenty-six, all three days.
Okay. And also, I'm thinking, you know, I've seen, you know, I won't mention who it is, but I've seen advertisements about one, you know, have gardens and maybe a railroad or something like that. They advertise that you can, you know, for this fee, you can come out and participate in, I guess, what would be an event. And so the fact that you have a building that you're having weddings in, there's other types of activities that would be included as an event.
Right.
And so where does that start and end is maybe the other question.
Well, with regard, what I would tell you is when we go through this process, if you're an agricultural event center, if you remember, the conclusion that we came to is that we verify that you have an agricultural use. And that essentially, we didn't get into defining what you could or could not do as an event. It could be a wedding, it could be a harvest festival, it could be a birthday party. As long as you have the agricultural endeavor, which as we get to later, is the same as to go into the Williamson Act, which is essentially forty-five hundred dollars a year, then you can do pretty much anything where you invite people onto the property for a social gathering. That would be an event. It really, there is no more, oh, it needs to be a wedding, or it needs to be a harvest festival. It's just simply, if you're having a social gathering, it's an event.
And maybe we could be specific and say paid social gathering?
I think, to be more specific, it would be, I think, not just paid, I think it's either private versus not private.
There you go. But if the, if the property owner has their own wedding reception there, that's not an event? That's something that anybody's entitled to do on their property.
I would agree. And so it's really, it's more about, if you're inviting people onto your property as a business venture and you're receiving pay for that, then that would be an event. If you have your cousin's wedding there and your whole family comes and it's just a big party, that's not an event.
Yeah. So that's why I was thinking paid event. And then the other suggestion would be that when we talk about, to answer that, is just say event dates, so that if there is a three-day event, that counts as three days.
Or maybe you don't want to use up three days for one event on a weekend.
The other thing that that would do, I think, is give somebody the opportunity to possibly have two events in one day.
That's a good point.
A morning, a morning something and an evening something.
That, no, that's a very good point. I like the idea of the event day. I think it specifies, we still have to get to the number, though. Are you satisfied with twenty-six, or do you think it needs to be more like fifty-two, sixty?
Yeah, maybe we ought to let the public kind of address that for us.
No problem. No problem.
So at any rate, I guess I'm, so irregardless of the agricultural nexus, you know, I have some ag-owned property and I want to have some events on there, but don't want to go through the event center...
Process.
Yeah. And so then what's, what am I doing?
So are these private events or are they for profit, like you're going to rent it out for a wedding?
Well, I think it's private events, you know, I mean, no, I mean, it's...
For profit?
Yeah.
If you do not go through this process or the process that comes out of this with regard to event centers, then the option available to you is a temporary outdoor event permit, which is up to two a year.
And you have two a year?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't want to go to jail.
Okay? The next thing is number...
I don't have that amount of property anyway.
The next thing was number seven. The direction was quite clear on that. If you're an agricultural event center, you need to have an agricultural opponent, component. The number that came up is the same number that's required to go into the Williamson Act, which is verifiable forty-five hundred dollar a year, ag production onsite, verifiable by the ag commissioner.
George, you might suggest a little wording change there.
Sure.
More gender neutral. Instead of his, I would suggest their designated.
Shall be made by...
Ag commissioner or their designated.
That's very sexist of me, I apologize.
Well, our former ag commissioner was...
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
Prepared for the future.
Right. Hours of operation, this is one that we had a lot of discussion about, not so much about any of the other ones, commercial or community event centers, but agricultural event centers. They are allowed to operate from ten AM to ten PM on Friday and Saturday, and from ten AM to eight PM Sunday through Thursday. But before, but before we go discuss that, I want to move right on to nine because it plays hand in hand with this. What are the noise regulations? And for agricultural event centers, shall be subject to Placer County noise ordinance and shall be required to stop all noise generating activities such as music at seven thirty PM or move such activities into an enclosed structure, which will reduce the noise level to twenty decibels or less at the event center's exterior property lines. Okay? Now, the thing that there was a lot of discussion about is when to cut off the exterior noise or outside noise in the last workshop. What was decided is that it had to do with sunset, a sunset time. So what I did is I went and looked at all the sunset times from April first to October thirty-first, because I thought that would probably be the bulk of outdoor events. What I can tell you is on April first, the sun sets at seven twenty-seven. And then as you move through the summer, you gain about a minute a day on sunset times. And the longest day is usually right around the beginning in the first week of July. And this year, it was at eight thirty-four PM. So July second of this year, this past July, sunset was at eight thirty-four. And then at that point, you start losing about a minute on sunset till you get to October thirty-first, and the sunset is setting at six oh six. The reason I came at seven thirty is it sort of fell right in the middle. It could easily slide to eight or eight thirty, or it could slide downward. But I figured seven thirty was, it might be a little bit early at the height of the summer, you know, because the sun would just sort of be going down like in July. But that's how I came to that conclusion. Any thoughts on that?
George?
Yes.
How does, the current noise ordinance is seventy decibels at the property line?
It slides at night. It's fairly high. I believe at night it's fifty, and then during the day, it goes up to sixty-five. And then there's a little bit of sort of averaging over time to allow some decibels. The way I got to twenty is I went online and I did some research about what sort of sound you can expect at certain decibel levels. Even at twenty decibels, you still, you still may hear it a little bit.
But what we're proposing here is that these event centers need to be quieter than the neighbors we're trying to protect from.
It's conceivable. It is conceivable. They don't have to be quieter indoors after seven thirty. I'm sorry. Right. I think, I think you would find that if you went into these areas, that that type of noise, the maximum noise levels are not exceeded very much after about seven thirty or eight. That's my experience, having grown up here and lived in an area exactly like we're talking about. It usually gets very quiet after about seven thirty or eight.
And George, is that based on being inside a building at that?
Yeah, I mean, at seven thirty, and you could slide it even later if you want. If, if, if you go inside a structure and that structure reduces the noise to twenty decibels or less at the exterior property line, that would be fine. That was what I took away from this meeting. If you're inclined to change that, to simply comply with the noise ordinance, that's also fine. I just need to know direction.
Okay.
It would seem equipment, you know, farming equipment and so on would make twenty decibels.
Farming equipment can be significant. I'll be honest with you, farming equipment can greatly exceed our noise ordinance, especially, for instance, in a farm zone with the rice pumps that run twenty-four hours a day in Western Placer County.
From the ordinance, though, isn't that kind of equipment and lawn mowers and those kind of things exempted from the...
It is. Ongoing agricultural equipment is exempted, but I am telling you that it can't, actual heavy farming, like in Western Placer County, is really, really quite noisy.
Particularly now they're harvesting.
Okay. So we're going to come back to that one. I'm, okay. Lighting, pretty straightforward. All lighting for agricultural event centers should be consistent with the rural design guidelines for Placer County, and should be dark sky compliant as specified by the International Dark Sky Association. Essentially, what they talk about is cutoff fixtures and that sort of thing to minimize light leaving the site. Food regulations, community center, commercial event centers by the conditional use permit. Agricultural event centers would be as specified by the conditional use permit. And if a commercial kitchen is approved with the event center, it shall only be used in conjunction with onsite events. Restaurants are not allowed as part of an agricultural event center. The last performance criteria was...
Hey, George?
Yes.
Just to clarify that.
Yes.
You know, how I would interpret a restaurant is, you don't want to have something open that people would just come to eat at. They should be there in conjunction with an event.
Exactly. Twelve, we talked about special notice requirements. I did propose that agricultural event centers would be required to post a notice three days prior to an event with a poster no smaller than eight and a half by eleven, which is about the size of posters we use for entitlements now, like variances in use permits and that sort of thing.
George, I was thinking that...
Yes.
Eight and a half feet by eleven feet, that's probably two sheets of plywood?
He wanted eleven inches.
He wants inches and not, I think, not feet, but it will do. Sorry about that.
Eight and a half by eleven inches. In a, they would look a lot like the posters that we have now, in a location commonly accessible to adjoining property owners. I can envision this, like, if you're property owners, you share a common roadway, but you put it at the front of the community center, or you put it at clustered mailboxes, and you'd have, we're going to have an event from four to eight PM. And if you have an issue, here's a phone number you can call. And that phone number would be required to be manned by a live person to take complaints. Those were the performance standards that I came up. I will tell you, there was a couple that we, that we took out that I think you will, some of the members of the public will want to discuss. It was my understanding that we did not want to have in the zoning text amendment or the new proposed ordinance onsite security requirements, and that we came to the conclusion that, or you came to the conclusion, that standards with regard to distance from each other or some other location was not really appropriate, and that that would be handled through a use permit as well. So there are no provisions for that. Also, there you will see that there are no provisions for code enforcement actions. We already have all those standards in place. Don't think they need to be in this ordinance. They actually might wind up limiting our police power to police this sort of thing. There's a lot of discussion. If someone does not comply with their use permit, we can set it for revocation and revoke that use permit based on cause, not complying. We also are about ready to start up our administrative citation process. We found an officer, we have everything ready to go. So in the next month or two, we'll be rolling that out. So we'll have a much quicker citing process. If someone is in violation, we'll be able to cite them and bring them in front of the administrative hearing officer, who has substantial authority to find people. And we'll be able to do that in a short amount of time, probably like thirty days. And I think that's about it.
George, can we talk about enforcement for a minute?
Yes, absolutely.
Because in the past workshops that we've had, the public is really focused in on enforcement.
Right.
And because those typically, the violations happen either on a weekend or in the evenings. We've had an issue of having, being able to respond to those. You were, you know, pondering about how to deal with that. Have you come up with any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I have. And I don't, let me say, I don't think the answer is putting it in the ordinance.
Right.
I think the answer is coming up with a code enforcement solution through the code enforcement division in such a way that we can respond more quickly. And that might be something like forging a relationship with the sheriff's department so that they can be the first responders because they're actually out. And they could go out and just do a preliminary check and say, hey, this is what happened. There was exterior music at two AM and people were outside, you know, that sort of thing. And they can report that back to us. At some point in time, if we need to, we can maybe have code enforcement officers on call on the weekend, if that's deemed an appropriate way to handle it. There's all sorts of ways to handle it, but I think they all exist now. And in my opinion, to you, my recommendation, it would be better not to limit that broad police authority in the ordinance, because what you don't want to do is have something written in ordinance and then find a new tool and someone challenge you based on the fact. You can't enforce it that way, because that's not how the ordinance says you do enforcement.
Right. I wasn't suggesting that it be in there. I'm just saying that we need to satisfy the public's concern that there is a way to address this issue when they, when that issue comes up, that somebody will respond and that they can respond at the time of the event happens. And I think in one of the last workshops we had, there was some discussion about, you know, monitoring the sound level. And I think somebody said that there's an app actually you can put on your iPhone where you can, it'll pick that up, I believe. I heard somebody say that.
Yeah. I don't know if that standard would work well if you're before a judge. My iPhone app says it was eighty-five decibels. I don't, it might, I don't know. I think it's probably something that we have to figure out from an enforcement standpoint. Um, I think i- it's probably something that we have to figure out from an enforcement standpoint with regard to, um, actually having defensible standards, like someone's gonna have to show up with an actually calibrated decibel meter and stand at the property line. Um, who that is, whether that's the sheriff, the way our noise ordinance is set up now, that's supposed to be the sheriff. The sheriff is, is actually written in the ordinance as the first responder to noise complaints. They are supposed to have access to decibel meters. Whether that happens or not, I can't speak to that.
Have you had any discussions with them about that?
I've had discussions as a supervisor of code enforcement about noise with the sheriff, specifically about a new process. I have not. But as we move forward, it will either have to be the sheriff that does it, or we'll have to do something from a code enforcement standpoint and have our code enforcement officers available more time. Maybe on a, on an on-call basis or something if there's a complaint.
Do we have any sense of their willingness to kinda step into that role?
The code enforcement officers?
Well, no, the sheriff.
I do not. I would be hesitant to speak on their behalf.
Oh, why not, George?
I have a question, George. Um, on the notification of only three days prior, is, do you think that's sufficient for the neighbors to, uh, respond if there's a, a question about it? Or why three days instead of like a week or something?
Um, three days was, I, I started with the assumption, you know, you have an event center next to you because it went through a use permit process. And, um, three days was just seventy-two hours was a guess in my mind. It was sort of like, three days should give you enough time. You know there's gonna be events like during the summer. Easily could change that if you think that's not appropriate. It's just that three days sort of, if you have an event every weekend, if you have to give notice more than three days ahead, it, it gets a little, little dicey, you know? Yeah. They start, you might have two or three added at a certain, so. Three days seem like a good time limit to me, but it could easily change.
George, I have a question. I have a theoretical ten acres like Richard does, uh, and I'm got, planting a vineyard.
And you are planting a vineyard?
I'm, no, I'm planting a vineyard, like theoretically.
Okay.
On the forty-five hundred dollars of production per year, well, that vineyard is not gonna be able to produce grapes for five years, whatever it takes for, to get production up and some wine made. So this, this says that I can't, um, apply for one unless I'm actually producing forty-five hundred dollars this year or forty-five dol- hun- forty-five hundred next year. Is that correct?
It is.
I'm just a que- question without arguing with it one way or the other, but just wanna clarify that.
That, it, that is what it says right now is that you, um, let me go back and, I wanna, I wanna look at one thing before I respond.
It's item seven, at least on the summary.
Yes. It does say within one year. Um,
Or does it, or have a potential?
Have, it says, it says you're either producing forty-five hundred dollars at the time that the ag commissioner or their designate-
Within one year of the application. So I'm just saying if I can't produce forty-five hundred next year, then I can't, I can't, I can't get, I can't get an a- application-
You cannot.
Until I, I think I can get forty-five hundred dollars the following year.
Right. If you were uncomfortable with that regulation, is there are things?
I'm not. I'm just, I just wanna clarify.
That's what it said.
I know a lot of people go out, they'll buy this property. We've had comments made here from different people. They went out and then they have no production capacity at all.
Right.
They just planted their vineyard or whatever else they're doing. And they wanna put up an event center. And I just, I'm not saying this is the bad thing. I'm thinking actually it's pretty good. I wanna be clear. People come up later on, they buy ten acres, that they, um, they can't get an event center right away unless they're actually showing some profit.
You gotta be a farmer to act like a farmer.
Could add the word or between application and the verification of so that it's either producing forty-five hundred dollars a year in income or the ag commissioner certifies it as a viable agricultural operation.
Could you get another agency in there to make the decision?
Well, it's, it's right now. It's, it's putting the onus of verification on the ag commissioner anyway. But I'm just saying it's your, you could do it either or. You're either producing forty-five hundred dollars a year in agricultural income or the ag commissioner has gone out and reviewed your operation and said, you're for real. Even though maybe your crops aren't in production yet, or the cows aren't big enough to slaughter yet or something like that. But can still see by what you've got installed that, that you're doing it for real.
Yeah, and I just like, you know, thirty day wonder kinda thing.
Yeah.
Well, we could maybe find two nanos.
That would be, that would be, uh, whatever, give me direction. I can change it to any, any kind of way you like.
We'll listen to the, listen to the public.
Let me see, uh,
just for clarification, uh, so, uh, y- you have a ten acre parcel. And you go through the process and the purpose of the process is that you design your, uh, event center to meet the criteria that are listed here. And so then, uh, you, you build your event center and everything's legal. And you have your first or second or third or fourth event and a hundred and ten people show up. I guess my, uh, thought on that would be, well, you know, this is a public complaint process. If a hundred and ten is too much, then if somebody from the public complained, then you'd have to check into that. But it's not the intent of this, the intent would be that you don't regularly schedule a, an event that's gonna have two hundred people in. You know, if you're gonna have a hundred and one or a hundred and ten, that's probably not a big deal, but a hundred and fifty and two hundred on a regular basis would be too much. Is that the way this would be, uh, managed or dealt with?
Technically, the ordinance says a hundred people. I don't think if you have a hundred and ten, that that's gonna, I, I, I don't even know if that would rise to the level of people noticing or not. But it does say a hundred. It, you are right. The, the intent is to stop people from, you know, regularly having, you know, like two hundred when they're only supposed to have a hundred. Hundred and five, a hundred and ten, probably it's not gonna rise to the level. Technically, it would be a violation of the ordinance.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions right now? If not, I'm gonna open it to the public and then.
Just-
So good, buddy. Go ahead, Jeff.
Quick question because we're on the number of people, George. This is number of paid attendance that we're talking about, not total atti- not, not total people on the property. I mean, uh, catering people or event staff would not be part of that count.
The event would be like, if you're having a wedding, a hundred guests gets to come on. If there's the employees, let's say there's ten employees and twelve caterers, that doesn't count.
That's not part of that count.
No.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna open up the meeting to the public. I'm gonna ask that you keep your comments to about three minutes, if you would be so kind. And could I have a show of hands? How many people would like to address this? Okay, fine. Just come in right behind, give your name. Please go right ahead.
I have four pages of comments. It would probably take me twelve minutes to read it. So, um, I'm assuming you're short.
Synopsis, yes, that'd be great.
Ooh, I think it's twenty seconds. Good morning. My name is Marilyn Jasper. I'm speaking on behalf of Public Interest Coalition and the Sierra Club. We commend staff's work and believe that the proposed Z T A is moving in the right direction. However, we urge you to not approve the draft Z T A as presented until a few changes are, are, changes are made to address, um, some concerns. Just to be clear, our goal, as evidenced by our track record over decades in this county, has always been to preserve ag lands. I, I wanna stress that. We're not against ag production. We're not opposed to event centers when they are properly located and they comply with their conditions of approval. It's the non-ag use stretch along with legitimate code enforcement concerns that have to be addressed head on. Otherwise, we feel that we are going to risk losing both productive ag lands and operations and huge, uh, community dissension will be created. Uh, to mention just a couple of areas, um, where we urge revisions with co- I, I understand why you don't, why code enforcement, um, may not be appropriate to put in here, but what is appropriate is to make that criteria, those performance standards so clear that when code enforcement is called for, there's no wiggle room. There's no loophole to get through. And so I kind of lumped it all under code enforcement, but I, I think a better, uh, articulation would have been or is um, a clear definition of the standard so that you can't, uh, wiggle out of it. Okay. Um, in the ag requirement to annually verify the event center is, uh, uh, making forty-five hundred dollars, the word production is problematic when it's used in the context of minimum requirement. Production is not a viable proof of an ongoing operation. It has to be in, reportable income, all right? Uh, otherwise, it's meaningless. I, I happen to have a fruit and nut or, little orchard. I could have a production, make forty, forty-five pies and say each one of those is worth a hundred dollars. I've met the criteria, forty-five hundred. It can't be production. It has to be reportable income. And I, I'm not, I, I'm pretty sure that's how the Williamson Act is too. And last, with that reportable income, uh, requirement, I think it should, should be tied into a cost of living index. If cost of living goes up, that should go up. Goes down, that could be reduced. Um, I have other things, but thank you very much.
Marilyn, are these same, the same, those things that you just turned in the day is the same one that we have in our agenda package?
No, that was from last workshop.
Oh, oh, this is a new one. Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, we'll get a copy of that then.
Make, make copies of that.
Tina Wilkins, Vina Castiano Winery. I'm curious as to what kind of infrastructure is gonna be required of people who wanna be in agricultural community center. Specifically when you're limiting them to only twenty-six opportunities to earn revenue each year. I don't think the people in this room understand the income that events themselves generate. I do. Uh, in comparison to the infrastructure costs that are gonna be likely required. If an event makes ten thousand dollars in this county, that is a hell of a successful event. So you're looking at twenty-six thousand dollars of revenue a year and you're also talking about- Wait, oh, so-
That's a quarter of a million dollars, not-
So, uh, it just doesn't meet the requirements for parking and all of those kinds of things that, um, you're requiring. How, and, and I keep hearing about the, the pies. You have to show that you're making money or an event is an event if you're making money. What the hell difference does making money have to do with the impact on the community? My concern is the impact on farming. Farming is a business. People who live in the farm zone live in a business zone. What repercussions do the business owners have regarding harassment of neighbors if they just don't want to be living near a farming business? I was in the last hearing here and I heard, uh, one of the ladies get up and talk about, well, an event that she had music and blah, 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 blah. And the whole time she was insinuating that it was Dona De Cello Winery when actually it was a quinceañera that was happening. So there's a lot of these, um, things that, uh, what, what, what safeties do the farm businesses located in the farm zone where they belong have against people who are living in the farm zone as residents only? Um, interestingly enough, the lady that came up in the last meeting brought up two interesting facts that illustrate much of my concern regarding the ag community centers, of which I am not. Number one, changes in zoning is part of what makes it frustrating for property owners. When you stop making farm and the ancillary businesses that support them, which these ag community centers will be, that's when the frustration comes up. Uh, farmers begin not being able, we've kind of taken farming, we haven't made it easy enough for farmers to farm in the farm zone. So they begin parcelling out their land. And the face of the farm zone begins to look like ag residential without changing the zoning. Um, the second point that she illustrated is I never thought this would happen mentality. People move in to a large, next to a large parcel of land and they never think about what might be going on there and what the intended use of that land is. Um, and more specific is the quiet zone during the summer. Leave it at the noise ordinance at fifty decibels. Seven o'clock is like five o'clock, uh, in the winter. And there has to be some allowance for this nuisance. My farm tractor is way louder than fifty decibels and it gets used during those periods of time. So I would think that people would rather hear a little music than that. We have to support the farmers and those businesses that are gonna support viable financial, making money is not a sin. It's, it's essential. And so the tax dollars and all of that stuff, you, we need to be considering that as well.
Say, Tina?
Yeah.
Let's go back and just be clear.
Okay.
Cause you have experience with events.
Yeah, they don't make crap for money. I have events at my place to bring bodies in to buy wine.
Let me ask my question. You don't make ten thousand dollars on a event?
Hell no. I haven't made, I, one time I made ten thousand dollars. And that was at a day, uh, something that happened on, i- in, during a day. You get people to your farm entity to try to do, it's a little bit different with the wineries. But what these ag centers have to offer people like me is an experience to bring other people into the ag zone. Uh, guest cottages and, and the different things that are being proposed, those are going to help my business and bring more traffic and, and people around.
So what's the re- I mean, if twenty-six isn't enough, what's the real number?
The real number is as many as they can have to make money, to make it viable, to hire people to work, to put heads on beds in this county and to put butts on restaurant seats and to put feet in the retail stores. That's the number. The number is whatever it takes to make them be able to stay in business and support the kind of infrastructure that at other meetings we're being required to do. Most of these farm businesses are open ten to twenty hours a week. But you're asking us to put in the commercial standards that you would ask, you know, a business that's open seven days a week in an area where there's high traffic. It's unfeasible. It sounds all great on paper. But what you're gonna do is kill farming in the farm zone if you don't give farmers and the ancillary businesses what they need to succeed. We have made huge progress. We've brought farming back between the mandarins and the wineries and the, the U-Pic farms that are out there. We've brought it back. And I'm, you can see I'm upset because dang it, people's intolerance of the nuisance of it all is gonna kill it. I live it every day.
I think you answered the question. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Susan Ames. I live at Weisengold Hill. Um, and I sympathize with business. I've had three businesses of my own over the years. And I sympathize when things are rough and this is a bad economic climate for businesses. And I think a lot of the proposals for the, the party centers, the event centers, the restaurants, the wine and food pairing, as Wise Villas calls itself, is a good idea. But I think it's in the wrong place. It belongs in a commercial area. And I will tell you, my point coming here today is to tell you for sure that for all of us who should be being protected, uh, because we don't have an ag business running right now, although I did have one, that a lender, and you can say, we're not lenders, that's not our concern, but part of your concern, planning department's concern, board of supervisors, should be protecting all of us and all our interests, including your own. Because a lender is going to see what's happening now with the party centers, the Wise Villas, which is a restaurant, they actually have signs out on the street during the day. And they are going to restrict the amount they're gonna lend on that. Some of them are gonna refuse to lend at all. So you or your family or anybody goes to sell your property, to get a refinance on your property, to get different insurance on your property, and you're going to find that your property value isn't what it should be because of these non-conforming uses. And I don't care how many people come up here and say, I love to live next to blah, 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 and I'd love to live next to blah, blah, blah. A lender looks at it in dollars and cents. And what's going on now is a non-conforming use for farm or ag residential, and that's the first thing they're gonna zero in on. I'm sympathetic, but I'm not willing to take money out of my pocket and give it to someone whose business is struggling. I'll help them any way I can, but I'm not willing to go that far. Thank you.
Good afternoon, I guess at this point. Uh, my name is Phil Maddox. I'm the owner of Lone Buffalo Vineyards. And, uh, the first thing I, I sent to the planning department an email yesterday, which I'm- And the first thing, I sent to the planning department an email yesterday, which I'm not sure got to the planning commission, so I would like to, it did?
Yeah.
Okay, good. I just have one brief comment to make here, and it's pretty much what I said in the email. As this matter is proceeding, we all know that the winery ordinance revision is proceeding at the same time, and I think it's appropriate that these matters be taken separately. There are too many references that come up to vineyards and so on when we're talking about community centers. If a winery wants to be a community center, that's fine. I can tell you that the number of wineries in the county, not all of them want to be community centers, and they have differences from the normal community center situation. And I pointed that out in my email, that when we're talking about community centers, even if they have an ag component, they are in business mainly to do events. Wineries are in business to market and to make and market wine, and because of the economics, they need to do some events in order to continue that business. And there's that fundamental difference there that I'd just like to make sure everyone keeps in mind as we move forward on these things, and I think it is appropriate, the direction it's going, the planning department is taking it in separate directions. So when we're talking about community centers, that's one thing, when we're talking about wineries, that's another. Thank you. Next.
Hello again, I'm Carol Rubin. I speak on behalf of Safe Plessert Farmlands, and I'm from Newcastle. There should be my complete response in the packet. I hope you got it. I sent it in a couple of days ago. And I won't try to go into all the points, but I do think, I did have one, a couple of major points dealing with this proposed zoning text amendment that really, really need some more attention, and those are the points of access and location for these event centers. I noticed that in the proposed zoning text amendment, there is still no prohibition on access from a shared private roadway for one of these. That is just asking for trouble, that people who have to share a roadway with potentially one of these places would be forced to put up with the noise and the maintenance issues. That's got to be in there. Please, please, see that it's included. Secondly, I used an illustration, and I'm going to use it here because it's an illustration that I'm familiar with, and also because it points up what Mr. Rosasco has said in the past about the fragmentation of lands in our county. My property fronts on Schindler Road. Schindler Road is a one and a half lane, local rural roadway that's a dead end. The only exit is onto Gold Hill Road. There are two parcels on Schindler Road. One is 83 acres and one is 56 acres. Their sole access is Schindler Road. They don't have potential access to any other roadway. And the rest of the properties on Schindler Road are small residences and small farms and ranches. Either of these owners of these properties, 56 acres and 83 acres, under this amendment could come to the planning department and say, I want my large agricultural event center. I get to have 400 people. There is no way, there is no way that that road can handle that volume of traffic. Secondly, since the only exit's onto Gold Hill, you're also going to be getting traffic from the Gold Hill Grange and the Gold Hill Gardens Community Center. And the traffic on these things tends to be concentrated within certain seasons, on certain days of the week, and within certain times of the day. It's not like it's all going to be spread out. No, you're going to have traffic jams. This sort of eventuality, and like I said, it's not unique to Schindler Road, it's just an illustration of what's going on throughout our county, would ruin our neighborhood. Ms. Ames has illustrated the kind of effect it would have on our quality of life, and that would include the quality of life of small farmers and ranchers in the area and our property values. So I want to ask again, please, that you direct the planning department to go back and include some criteria for minimum road size for access, and I suggest rural arterial is appropriate. I also suggest that if you can't confine these things to areas that are close to the city limits or to existing commercial districts, that please at least specify that they not be within a certain minimum distance of each other. I've suggested three miles. I'm sure that'll never fly, but it gives a starting place. There has to be some way that we can control these things and limit them to areas and access where it's feasible for them to exist, and I want to thank you again for your consideration.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Patricia Burke, Newcastle. Thank you, Mr. George Rosasco, very much for all the work you've put in, you and your staff. I have a couple of areas where I take exception. Under setbacks in the proposed CTA, there's a wiggle room, and there is wiggle room in a number of areas, because what it says is or as specified by the conditional use permit. I would like very much for there to be more stringent guidelines so that we don't have or as specified by the CUP, so that everyone is operating under the same conditions and that we all know what to expect. Thank you.
Miss, I have just maybe a question or a comment here. The conditional use permit is, becomes very specific once it's agreed to, and, you know, there's various, you know, various conditions for the various parcels.
Absolutely.
And so in some cases, you know, I mean, the 200 feet is the standard, but, you know, there could be some parcels where there would be the possibility of an exception, and I don't know of any, and it would probably be rare, but at least the way I interpret that, it's saying, well, okay, if somebody comes in and makes a proposal, and part of the proposal doesn't exactly fit that standard, then, you know, they can make their argument. And with the planning department, the planning department will take a serious look at it, and then before it really is approved in a conditional use permit, there would be a public process at a planning commission meeting that would prove it. But once it's approved, then it would be a very specific document that would...
And I do understand that, Mr. Johnson. My concern, of course, is that everything is going to become the exception rather than the rule.
Okay, I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name's Mike Carson. As you know, recently approved through four Gold Hill Gardens. I wanted to touch on a couple of things. First and foremost, I really think that the commission needs to consider a solid definition of what constitutes an event. I hear a lot of components thrown out there regarding paid occupants and whether there's profit being made and those kind of things. But I'd like to share with you several events that I've had at my property. I've done Leadership Auburn graduation ceremony. I've done Newcastle Area Business Social. A lot of community functions I've had at my property. I regularly have horseshoe tournaments. I regularly, I do Mother's Day brunch every year. I have people from the community at my property for that. And Halloween, I do a pumpkin carving contest where I invite people from the community. I don't make a dime on those functions. If you try to define an event just by the day, then what you're going to do, and you restrict the number of events a business that's trying to conduct a profitable business can do, what you're going to do is you're going to cut all those community things out that good people try to provide for the community. You're going to cut all those out, because nobody's going to do that anymore. So I really think that you need to define what constitutes an event. I think that's very, very critical. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about the number of events, the fact that there's trying to say that you have to notice, put a notice up every time, and then the noise constraints. I think that you need, really need to go out and look at the community that you already have here. You've got several facilities that are operating as community centers. I don't need to name them. They haven't been a problem to the community. I don't think there's been any complaints. I think what you're seeing is hysteria. And I think rather than try to, let me just finish, rather than try to limit what people can do, why don't you uphold the conditions? You have to go through a public process, conditional use, or minor use permit in my case, uphold the conditions that are being put on these businesses. If they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing, then go after their permit. But don't say they can't. Don't limit them so much that they can never get off the ground. Give them a chance to prove themselves. That's it. If you have any questions, I'm...
I think you were, you were probably referring to Granges. Is that what you were referring to?
Grange Halls and Flower Farm, there's other functions out there, there's other facilities out there that hold, that hold events regularly. It's a regular business. And some of the wineries do events. They just don't do it with a permit.
Okay.
So I think, I think you need to have enforcement be the method so that you don't punish everybody for the one bad apple. I just don't see the problems that you've been, that everybody says is going to be a problem. I just, I haven't seen it, and I don't, I don't think you're going to see it if the business is run correctly. It's a business, just like farming.
Miss, and you also were in opposition to the posting requirement?
Yes, I think that's ludicrous. If somebody goes through a public process to get a use permit, why do they have to then notice every single time they're going to go open their doors for business? That's crazy.
So you're saying that the business that they would be in that would require a notice is their main business, not the agriculture or event?
It's augmenting their...
No, no, augmenting, you just said that it was the main business to post it. So I'm trying to see if there's a difference between the agricultural and ancillary, how I'm trying to define it in my mind.
I don't, I don't see the difference between the two, I guess.
If you don't, that's understandable. Yes, I can see that.
As, as an operator, one of these, would you have opposition to some sort of permanent signage, posting a phone number for whenever you have an event, they can contact you?
Would not have a problem with that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you.
You bet. Next, please. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing part and take a five-minute recess, because I need one. Thank you.
You know, just a thought here, as I'm listening to a lot of this, the purpose of this ordinance, as I understand it, was to supplement agricultural so that it was maintainable and we could keep it around in the county. My fear is, is that some of these operations, the event center will become the crux of the operation and the focal point, and truly the agricultural will slip by the wayside and only meet the minimum standards in order to...
The agricultural part will become the ancillary.
And in the long run, we haven't really done anything to sustain the agricultural use and make it more feasible. We've, we've just kind of distracted ourselves from what's happening anyway. And I... I don't... I don't know what the solution to that is, but I just see it happening that, as hard and painful it is to try to make a profit agriculturally, that when, when, when money starts coming in from the event center, that that will become the focal point and not agriculture. Don't know how to cure that, but it is a concern I see happening, or that I could see happening in several cases, just a thought. Other than that, my comments, I would like to see the noise ordinance, just tied with the county. I don't think event centers, commercial property, next to residential, doesn't have a different noise ordinance. We all live with that one. It's, I wouldn't say it's good, but it's what we have, and I don't think we need a separate one for this use and a separate one for this use and that kind of thing. If there are site restraints that make noise an issue on a conditional use permit application, it can be dealt with by a case, on a case-by-case basis. Just my thoughts.
I'm a little concerned about access issues, too, that was brought up by someone. My concern is that, especially if it's a private road, I think that's a whole different issue, and I think that there should be requirements for coming up with an agreement with anyone that's on that road as far as service and access and that sort of thing, that it shouldn't be forced upon them if it's a private road. And I am concerned that they, that as was mentioned, that some of these county roads, you know, you barely, two cars can pass each other, and is that an appropriate access point for some of these facilities if you're talking about 100 people or 200 people using them on a concentrated period of time? So I just think that needs to have, be flushed out a little bit more. So I just think that needs to be flushed out a little bit more.
You know, I guess... What's, no, I'm, you wanna go, you know, I have some thought, you know, maybe a broader thought. But if you wanna go ahead, go ahead.
Well, no, I was, I guess I'm concerned that we're actually forcing these operations into a commercial environment. You know, you take, right now, we're talking about if you're gonna have this, you have to have a commercial kitchen. Well, that's a really expensive item. That's all stainless steel. And somehow, I would think it would make sense to let the operation stay smaller if they want, not be, not force them into some grand scheme. Let them do what they, what they want. If they wanna have a bigger operation, then of course, let the health department regulate it. I mean, that's their role in this thing, is an example. I guess I'd like to have, let them have the opportunity to have these on a smaller scale. So we're not pushing them to have the big, grand scale and stuff. I just concerns me that...
The grand scale part seems to be only if they desire to have this large event center, then you have to do large events center kind of stuff. If you're gonna remain small and ancillary, then you won't have to do that. That's kind of the impression I got from, you know, you don't have to have a commercial kitchen, let's say, if you're doing a small event irregularly. And if you're gonna do a big event fairly regularly, you gotta have a big kitchen. So we're just, I guess, in some degree eliminating some of the wiggle room of having a big event and only having a small kitchen or something like that.
Yeah, I understand.
I know what you're saying. It's like we're regulating the business rather than the...
Yeah, we're forcing commercial applications.
The event center definition, yeah.
Richard, what's your thought?
Well, it's kind of a similar thought. You know, we can propose that these be written so tight that nobody will be able to even consider having one of these. And if, you know, if it prevents, I mean, you can prevent them totally just by writing the standards real tight. And, you know, like one of the 26 events and one event equals one day or whatever. You know, I tend to agree that maybe it should be open, you know, as long as they're meeting the other criterias and not causing problems with the neighbors. And what's wrong with having more than 26 events? And I agree that, you know, these things are gonna have to start small anyway. So why consider them to be such a large activity and such a problem that, you know, we tighten it down so that they can't even consider applying? So I think we're kind of on the verge of balancing here between restricted amount of business and having a few proposals come forward that can be adequately considered by the planning department and the planning commission. And ultimately, supervisors will doubt of that. But, you know, I think we have to hear some things.
You know, follow along this, too. Bringing the poster up, the comment that was made about posters. I think maybe that's a little wasted effort, you know?
The notification?
Yeah, the nine-foot-by-12-foot sign. Those are gonna unfortunately end up alongside the road and just be trash, you know? And people are just gonna say, you know, it's just a mess. I don't know. I think that if you're gonna give them an opportunity to do something, then you're gonna do it, you know, anyway. And that's just another...
I think the other real important issue, and I think it was Mr. Carson brought it up. It doesn't matter what conditions we put on these. We can get creative as heck and we can just do a perfect job. If there's no enforcement, it's all just a feel-good show for whoever's sitting here wanting to see conditions placed on a project. That's the, that's the true real issue that's coming up. If there's, we can make all the rules we want. If there's no enforcement of the rules, it does no good.
Yeah, but do we, do we have, how much authority do we have to actually affect enforcement? I mean, realistically?
I'm not sure.
We say, hey, we want sheriffs department crews...
As we're laying on the conditions and we're laying on the rules, we have to be mindful that there's nobody there to enforce them. Those who will comply and are good neighbors are gonna be good neighbors anyway. Those who aren't...
Are the reason that we write rules.
But until there's enforcement of those rules, they will break them anyway, just like they'll thumb their nose at their neighbors.
Yeah, but see, that's, that's a truth to this argument in my opinion. And if we don't set the rules, we're opening it to anybody to do anything. If we have the rules, then at least if we can get somebody to enforce them, they have something to enforce. If we say, hey, we don't have any rules, then we're, why are we even here? Why bother planning?
I agree. I agree with you. I think, I think George has done a good job encapsulating in just a few pages some of the concerns. But I do agree with Jeffrey's earlier remarks a little bit ago about protecting agricultural. I don't have an answer either, but are we gonna protect anything with some of these requirements? I'm not quite sure.
And I think some of that goes back to what Larry said. When we put conditions on so heavy that they have to spend a million dollars to get the site ready, their focus is now gonna be on getting paid back for that expense and making it, having it stop from burying them financially instead of helping supplement the agriculture.
Right. Well, I mean, obviously, if it's, if it's there in the beginning to supplement the already ongoing agricultural business, if you have a small farm, you have a small event. If you have a huge farm, you can have a huge event. If you have something really big, it affects more people, so you'll have to have more rules concerning what goes down. That, I mean, that's just my general thinking on any of this. I mean, part of it, in my opinion, is the confusion between agricultural events and any other kind of events. And does an event center, is that the business? The event center is the business? Or is farming the business and they have a small, it's a gray area? And that's why we're sitting here talking about this, folks, because all the definitions are up for question right now. And so that's why we're discussing it as we are.
Okay, let me respond to that, you know. And personally, if somebody has a successful event center and they maintain their agricultural operation to the level that was talked about here, and relying on the agricultural commissioner to give feedback on the agriculture...
Aspect of it, yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm okay with it. You know, I personally don't have a problem with somebody having an event center, as long as they meet the agricultural criteria, that is profitable. I don't have a problem with that. And to balance whether or not that's above or below the agriculture activity...
Well, we already gotta define it.
That doesn't bother me either, you know? I mean, if the event center makes more money than the agriculture, fine.
But is it zoned for commercial, I mean, for agricultural? Or is it zoned for, you know, making money having events? That's the question.
Well, if the event...
If it's in the ag area, do we change the zoning?
If the, if this zoning goes through, then yes, it is.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. That's the question, is do we wanna change the zoning so that allow people to have event centers with ancillary farm, as opposed to having a farm with ancillary event?
That's what we're doing. We're changing the zoning. And so I just, I'm expressing my opinion that as long as they meet the agricultural criteria, you know, and they meet the criteria that we're identifying performance standards here, then I don't personally care if the event center makes more money than agriculture.
And it's not the profit issue. It's the intent of the ordinance was to keep agriculture viable. So if you have 100-acre parcel and now you wanna, that's all under grapes, all under almonds, I don't care what, and now you wanna put your event center in, well, now we gotta have a parking lot. So we start blading down a bunch of trees to make room for parking. Then we need room for the building, so we start blading out. So pretty soon, when it's all said and done, after 10 years, we've now got five acres of trees under productions and the rest of it is devoted to event center. That hasn't preserved agriculture.
Well, you have, you have five acres of trees rather than...
Than 100 acres.
Other than five or six or 10 small parcels. So if you, you know, preserve some of the agriculture in the open space rather than becoming residential, then you preserve agriculture. So, you know, I think we're getting into a point here where I'm saying we're relying on the agricultural commission to make a call on the agriculture. And so the more we get involved in that, then the less the agricultural commissioner's gonna be involved in. So that's where I'm at. And if it's a successful event center, that's fine, as long as they meet the agricultural commissioner's view of agriculture.
Wait, let me, let me follow up on that.
I'm listening to everything.
Richard, Richard, you're saying that you only, only agree on item seven agriculture requirements? And the rest of the things that are our performance standard? And also this map here, the zoning district and all that? You don't, you don't care about any of that?
Oh, yeah. I think it's, I think it's fine.
Okay, I'm just one, I'm just...
I do question the 26 events, you know. I think, I tend to agree that we can make it unprofitable to the point that nobody will be able to come forward with a proposal, but...
Okay.
But the rest, I mean, the majority of it, I think, is a very good job.
Kind of thing.
That would be, that would be fine with me if we did it that way, based on him.
And give us a little more discretion in each one.
George, you put us on a quandary, man.
If I could, just one thing. So I was listening to everything. So essentially, the real, the real issue that I think that you would like to deal with are the number of events, the noise standard as proposed. You may want to talk a little bit more about access issues. I don't know if you wanna discuss enforcement or not. I think the enforcement issue, it came up a little bit. And I think the enforcement issue, there just needs to be a clear, a clear understanding and direction in the county that these are a priority with regard to enforcement. And we bring to bear the tools that we already have to correct any problems or people who step out of line with regard to these uses. So I think really it's the ag use issue, the number of events issue, noise. I did hear one thing about the food and worrying about commercial regulations. You don't have to have a commercial kitchen. You don't have to have any kind of kitchen facilities. You could simply have catered events and that sort of thing. So we're not forcing anyone to go beyond where they want to. The only thing that, the two biggest issues that I see are really, when you get right down to it, is the number of events, noise, access, parking. Those are really the crux. And those, those are what I'd really like to get some direction on today. Because what my hope is, is after today, that I have enough direction to amend this ordinance as you see fit, and then start going to the MACs. There are approximately 13 MACs that I'm gonna assume most of them are gonna wanna see this. And it's gonna be a two-step process because this is a huge amount of information. So we'll go one, one time, explain it, have a conversation about it, and then probably go a second time for them to actually take an action and make a recommendation back to you. And then before we go to the board, we'll bring all the MACs information back to you with the draft ordinance, so you can make a recommendation and modify as you see fit before it goes to the board. Does that make sense?
It does. I should just like to say that besides the issues that you mentioned, that the one that concerns myself the most is the attempt, shall we say, to make any of the agricultural event centers an actual commercial event center by having some kind of a agricultural component. So they're making an end around, in a sense, and I'm really trying to keep that from happening.
So it goes back to that, to what I mentioned, the ag use. You're concerned that the requirement that they have $4,500 in ag production or depending on what comes out of this, a verifiable ag use as described by the ag commissioner that could create that much money, that that might not quite be adequate for the ag component?
Oh, especially if we start, shall we say, relieving some of the burden on the commercial event centers by saying, oh, you don't have to have this much notification. You can have less parking or do any of those kind of things that in a sense turn the agricultural event center into a viable work, event center.
Mm-hmm.
And that's not preserving agriculture, like Jeff says. I don't, I don't see that as the purpose of the zoning text amendment.
I want somebody to be able to go buy a 100-acre parcel, put up a, basically a hotel, and then because they just went and bought a truckload of cows, say, no, it's agricultural. We're good.
To some degree, that's what I would like to keep from, prevent from happening, yes. The access issue and the light and the noise and all, these are ancillary to that.
Right.
That would be my only, or my main concern.
Well, certainly what I could tell you is the $4,500 a year and the verifiable use by the ag commissioner is a jumping-off point. And I think one of the things that came through clearly in the previous workshops is that every one of these things, other than in the commercial zone districts, where there'd be commercial event centers, is gonna require a use permit. And that's gonna give you, it's gonna give you, the planning commission, the ability to thoroughly vet every one of these questions. I mean, you have the authority to say, we don't really think this is appropriate as an agricultural event center because of X, Y, and Z, and choose not to make the findings. That it will endanger the health, safety, and general welfare of the surrounding property owners. That goes with regard to access issues. The more you quantify, as Mr. Johnson was saying, the more you quantify something like an access issue and you say, you need 23 feet, you need this much pavement, you need this much aggregate base, the more difficult it is, when there's the exception that doesn't need that, to go in a different direction. And that's, that's the beauty of having a use permit for all these things. It's like, you could look at this and someone could wanna do, they wanna have an event center that has six events at the end of a private road. And, you know, it's on 10 acres and they're like, we wanna have 20 events a year. And you're like, oh, you know, the road is gypsy and it's 10 foot wide and there's nowhere to park. That's not gonna work. And they would have to describe or be able to meet certain standards to accommodate 100 people. And if they can't meet those standards, you find that it endangers the health, safety, and general welfare of the surrounding property owners and you deny it. That's really, that's really what a use permit allows you to do. So you can go in either direction. I'm happy to modify this as the commission sees fit. But one other thing I would tell you about the number of events to keep in mind is what Mr. Carson said is absolutely true. There, you may wanna make some allowances for events that are community-minded, like non-charging pumpkin carving, open to the community. But what I would tell you is, when you consider that any event, whether it's pay or not paid for, has pretty much the same land use impact to surrounding properties. What we're talking about is maybe making allowances based on the intent of an event. But because you have 100 people who come for free with their kids and carve pumpkins, doesn't mean that that's gonna be any less than when you have 100 people come for a wedding. The land use impact's the same. So while there may be a reason based on intent to do that, just keep in mind that the land use impact will remain the same.
Wait. As you go through the process with the MACs, are you gonna be making some potential modifications to this based on what you're hearing from the feedback from the MACs? Because I think of the Lincoln MAC made some excellent suggestions initially. And so will you be sensitive to adjusting this for them so that there's still kind of this filtering process going on?
What I would tell you staff would do is, like I said, because this is a huge issue and there's a lot of information, we'll probably go to each MAC twice, unless they don't want me to come back. If they just wanna make a recommendation, then... But...
The way you said that didn't sound too good.
Right. So we'll go, give them the information, let them mull it over, probably go to the next meeting and ask for recommendations. We'll take all those recommendations, we'll package them. And then what we do is then we'll come back to the commission and we will lay what all the MACs said. This is what, this is what Royal Lincoln MAC said. This is what Weimar Applegate Colfax said. And then we'll sift through those things. Hopefully, we will, I'm gonna guess, their concerns are not gonna be very much different from yours, but they might have some other ideas about how to handle it. And we'll bring that all back to you. You'll look at it. You would make recommendations to me again. I'll modify as appropriate. And then hopefully, you'd make a recommendation for staff to take forward to the board of supervisors. And that may, the second round after the MACs, hopefully, we'll take one meeting, but it very well could take two.
So it may be a while before you get back.
I've been asked to come back expediently, but there is, there is 13 MACs. So it, it could be some... So it, it could be sometime before I'm back.
Well, you know, that being said then, George, you're, you're gonna get a lot of input. We've also got some things that were handed in today that we've not even read yet today. That being said, I'm, I'm comfortable with what you gave me today.
Okay.
And, and, you know, we could argue twenty-six, twenty-eight.
I do, I do have a couple, maybe process-oriented questions.
Okay.
All right, can I finish? I was gonna say, I agree with what Richard just said in that I think this is a good framework to move forward on that. We're still gonna have opportunity for input. Obviously, the MACs are giving input.
Right.
Unless we see something absolutely glaring here, I think this is, this works for me.
Okay.
Yeah, you're headed the right direction, we think.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that the number of potential events up-
Okay.
With, with, with the ability during the conditional use process to, you know, to shave it as needed to, to fit the site and the access and the location and what have you.
So you would like to start at a higher number of events and work backwards?
Yeah, all agriculture event centers shall be allowed up to a maximum of so many event days.
Do you, do you have a number?
Um, you know, I think that's something that maybe you could solicit opinions from the MACs.
Okay.
But, I mean, certainly one a week, I don't think is a terrible number to look at, or not one a week, but fifty-two a year kind of thing.
That was the other number that staff toyed with, right?
Or whether it be three in one week and then the next.
Do we really, do we really have to have a number? Because couldn't we just say that it will be determined through the, through the hearing process, what that number, the appropriate number?
And, and that absolutely is true. It could be regulated by the use permit, and that is something when we go out to the MACs and we come back, that may be one of those issues, it's like, here's what the thirteen MACs said.
Because when you put a number on it, people are gonna start counting on that number. So, so that might make more sense, is that it's a discretionary number.
Okay. Yeah, definitely, definitely keep that in mind.
Okay, Richard? Yeah, on that issue, I guess, you know, I, I agree with what's being said, but I guess what my concern is in the process. You know, if we're gonna make this statement in here, somehow we have to factor the economic impact in it. Because if you have a criteria that's not ever gonna be profitable, then, you know, we really need to think why we're even going through this process. And so, so I don't know the number, you know, fifty-two's a good one to start with, or maybe no number, saying, leaving that open to the planning department and the commission to determine. And that might be the way to establish profitability, just what I said there. But I think that profitability is something that we need to be careful of. And then on the agricultural requirement, there is a possibility that somebody establishes, you run up against this in the Williamson Act Two, where somebody just established their agricultural operation and it's not into productivity yet, but we do need to defer to the ag commissioner to, I think, determine the actual possible productivity of a parcel, rather than clouding the issue with ourselves or the written thing. Here, the ag commissioner can look at a property and say, yeah, you're gonna be in production in this amount of time, and it's gonna meet this criteria, and so that's okay. But I think by the requirement that they be in production in the following year is probably too restrictive, and, and I don't think the Williamson Act is that restrictive, so.
Okay.
That's just a couple of comments. Otherwise, you know, I, I do commend you on this-
Oh, thank you.
On the preparation of this, and I think it's very well prepared, and I think we're headed in the right direction of it.
Thank you. So, so I understand there's a few things that when everyone's comfortable with the framework that we have, but as we go forward, there are some things that you would like me to hit as highlights at the MACs. One would be a discussion about how many events is appropriate. I will say that the planning commission asked me to bring that to your attention.
Yeah, and that should be colored by the, you know, an economic consideration, not just by an arbitrary number.
I absolutely represent what you guys have said accurately, that there is concerns that by putting a number on, that it will be detrimental to, to promoting agriculture with regard to agricultural events, and that there, there's some thought that maybe the appropriate thing is either to have a much larger number and work backwards, or that it is left open-ended and determined through the use permit process.
I prefer the open-ended.
Open-ended?
Yeah, because I think what'll happen is you'll discourage applicants if you put a number on it, and they'll say, well, I can't make that with pencil.
Okay, well, maybe if that's, if that's what the commission feels, maybe we should just go forward with the MAC and that should be, that the commission feels that the agricultural event center should be, the number of events should be open-ended and it should be determined through the use permit.
Because you could have, you could have a, a, a large parcel that wants to have many smaller events.
Right.
They might wanna have a hundred, if a hundred and fifty people as opposed to ten with five hundred kind of thing, and, and-
Right.
Obviously, one could be swallowed in areas a lot easier than the other-
Okay.
Depending on roadways and access and that kind of thing.
Okay. So then I'm hearing that we should move forward with agricultural event centers having open-ended number of events that will be determined through the use permit. The other, the other thing that I heard a lot of discussion about is the ag uses. How do we ensure that the ag is actually being promoted and remains viable through the process? So we need to have a discussion with that at the MAC.
Right, and, and, and don't let the economic issue of the success of the event center-
Overpower the ag.
Right.
Okay?
Excuse me, can we add the ag commission to the review process, please?
I'm sorry, I, I couldn't hear you. Go ahead.
I'm, I'm so sorry to interrupt. Can we add the ag commission to the review process? It's not on there. It's not on the schedule.
Well, you were just mentioning it as being used to determine the actual viability of the act.
Yeah, but I mentioned the ag commissioner, I'm sure the ag commissioner will have the option to bring it to the commission.
So everyone knows when we, when we go out to the MACs, we also can, can take this before the ag commission, just like we are.
We almost have to. This is all, I mean-
Yeah. We're happy to do that. It's not- Yeah, yeah, it's-
And please emphasize to the MACs and the people at the MACs that the whole idea of the use permit allows them to come in and say, no, that's too many people and too many events, and that's when they make their stand and we say yes or no.
And the third thing that I heard discussions about, and I don't, I don't, I'm, I'm gonna ask, do you want me to hit about the noise issue?
That's ancillary to me. I mean, we've got other issues that are, that's, that's details, working, hashing out the details, I think we need even more fundamentals.
I think the noise issue- I could present it in such a way that there is a thought that maybe these should be regulated more stringently, but there's also, there's also another school of thought that says that they should be subject to the exact same regulations that their neighbors are.
That, that seems to me that would be a discussion for the MACs because this is, this is a very big issue in the whole process, and so-
I was gonna say, a lot of comments last time were about noise.
So, you know, to let, let, let it roll the way it is and then see how people feel about it.
Okay. So, open-ended events, have frank discussions about agricultural uses not being overpowered by successful event centers and how we maintain the ag use and the ag viability of the land, disclosure about, and frank discussion about noise, and go before the ag commission with all of these things. Is there anything else that you'd like me to discuss when I'm out and about?
Posters.
Oh.
Notification?
Notification.
I'd, I'd also bring up, besides the poster, the idea of websites or something like that, that people might be able to find out about, so as like Larry says, it doesn't end up as garbage in the street. I mean, the variance posters end up there too, so that's not a legitimate argument. We still use variance posters.
You know, I'm-
It just might be some idea that they might try.
The thing that I, I have to admit that I did like Mr. Carson's idea about the possibility of a permanent posting, because then people know, it's like, hey, send the kids down, check out the poster, tell me what it says-
Right. And the idea that there is an actual live person on that phone number at all times.
So a permanent poster somewhere, and that way the neighbors will learn that that's where the permanent posting is and that sort of thing.
But shouldn't you have to post for each event separate information?
He didn't want that.
So basically, the event would say, this is an event center. If you have an issue with an event, call us?
Yeah.
Yeah. It'd be a standard type of-
Kind of a standard-type posting, like an informational sign that says, if you have an, if you have a problem during one of our events, call this.
It would be a permanent sign rather than some piece of paper that'll end up down the road.
And that could be discussed as part of the use permit about the most appropriate place to put that.
Right.
And that's, that's really part of the enforcement process.
Right, and the enforcement on having somebody live on the phone who will actually answer.
Right. But you do like having a live person available during-
Yes, that's-
A live person available, maybe they also need to have code enforcement's number on that sign too, if they're not getting taken care of by the live person properly.
Let's not get crazy. Yeah, that's a distinct possibility, that we could put, we could put Placid County Code Enforcement, especially if we have an on-call officer.
Right.
That call would go directly to, to someone and then out to the officer. Definitely a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, because it'll help keep them on their toes too,